And I would ask that Prue call the roll.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Chair Brian Cafarelli.
I am here.
Vice Chair Chris Brogan. Secretary Marlene Batista.
Here.
Uh, Jim Gross. Don't see him. Um, Pamela Iaccone.
Here.
John Matola.
I'm here.
And John Nguyen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And next, I'm gonna move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm gonna ask that you remain standing afterwards so we can take a moment of silence. Um, I pledge allegiance. The United States of America.
To the Republic.
To the Republic.
And um, I would, uh, a couple of the commissioners have suggested, and I agree, that we take a moment of silence for those who tragically lost their lives in Texas and tho- the families of, of the, of those who are suffering. Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is item number four, continuation of final actions prior to public hearing. And there have been a lot of documents that have been, um, shared with the commission and on the website, and thus the public. I would, uh, just like to check in with our counsel, Steve Mendick, to see how he thinks, um, should we go from the final document that you sent and then just flag the issues?
Yeah, what I, what I may suggest is John Nguyen sent in, and thank you, John Nguyen, Commissioner Nguyen, for, um, your steadfast editing and reading of the documents. Um, the things that I was, that I have my editor looking at right now, so it's gonna make the job a little easier for us as we go through this process, and I appreciate the things you've done. What I can do is go through chapter by, or article by article, and, um, I'll mention, uh, in, um, where I have issues. I won't mention every time I find a John Nguyen errata. Those will be noted. You will see them. They're, they're clean. But if John raised a question that I couldn't resolve because of, um, uh, it was not a clear errata or there was more of a question involved, um, I'll raise that as well. When we get to the budget, um, I've integrated John Matola's ideas. I'm sure John will raise them himself, but just for, um, safety's sake, for my own review, I put them in the body of the document so that it will be easy for me to manipulate and play with as we go through this. And then as we're going through the articles, if anybody has any questions about anything in the articles, this is the time to speak up because we've gotta report this out for a public hearing.
Sounds good. Uh, the, any of the commissioners have, um...
Is that muted?
Yeah, I think that someone thinks they're muted and they're not, so. How did we, could we mute Colin, the user six, Prue?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Um, do any of the commissioners have any, uh, comments before we proceed, as Steve just outlined? Okay. Well, let's go ahead. Let's, uh, bring this ship home.
All right. Um, in, um, Article One, John had a number of, um, of erotic cleanups, um, internal changes, and we're gonna continue to find these, um, and I will work steadfastly to try to make sure we get as many of them done before we put the public hearing, um, before we send the document to the, uh, Board of Selectmen. So there may still be, um, um, internal reference issues, uh, with the final document. Hopefully minimal, hopefully none. But I found, I found another, um, um, because I've, I've done a search on, uh, Selectmen and I still found one Selectman, uh, today, uh, that even John Nguyen didn't pick up, uh, in his, in his commentary. So, uh, and my editor's looking at these right now. So in, um, Article One, there were really no changes. John had a question, though, on the issue of elected town officials, and, um, he was asking why the RTM was not included in the list. I believe that was your question. And, um, and I have to tell you, I had the same question, um, because, uh, historically, that has been the case. When I did the merger, when I did the, uh, proposed modification of the structure of government and was trying to move the RTM from a, um, for lack of a better term, a town meeting model, to a small legisla- legislative model, a council model, for lack of a better term. I moved it into that category because it was changing its nature. And we were trying to look at it in a different way. When it went back, um, I inadvertently left it in the elected officials category, and several people said to me, they're their own category because basically it is a vestige of the, um, of the, uh, town meeting, and, and they are the, the ghost of the town meeting, basically, and, and historic, descendant of the town meeting, and that's the way the town, the, the RTM has been utilized in this town. And so I put it back into its own category. That's why when you get to, to Article Two, you don't find them in the list of elected town officials. They have their own category, Subcar- uh, uh, 2.3B. So that's the rationale for that. Um...
It, I had a point before that, if we're, if you're done with that one.
Yep, I'm done with that.
Um, back in 1.4, the definitions, boards or commissions, so 1.4C2.
Yep.
Um, it took out, uh, and the, the term does not include, blah, 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 by appointing for a limited, it used to say delimited duration, now it says limited purposes or scope. Curious why duration should be taken out. I'm not sure that's, makes a difference or not, but it seemed to be a... I'm wondering if it was in there just to prevent people to get around some other rules by just keeping this commission going forever. Maybe I'm...
Yeah, I don't know the answer. Um, I forgot where the request came from. Uh, some, somebody had brought this up and indicated to me, do you need to reapprove a, um, a, a body, uh, if you move from administration to administration? If the administration gets reelected, do you need to approve the do- the body again? Because are you limited by the creation during the term of office? Because the objective here is not to create a durable board or commission.
Right.
It's to create something that is more limited in scope. So I, I'm, um, you know, I'm agnostic, and I'll leave it up to you, but I did, um, I did try to maintain that purpose and scope is, uh, limited. It's not meant to be permanent by any stretch of the imagination. So I, I will leave that debate to the commission, if you want to discuss it.
John Matola.
Well, maybe Jim Baldwin might know. I don't know. When, when we, when the Board of Selectmen creates one of these task forces, do they, do they include in the charge that it's only in existence for a limited amount of time? Do we have any? I don't, I've been on a couple of them over the years, but it's been a long time. And, um, do you, do you recall anything about that, Jim?
Yeah, I, I think that the, the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, or whatever its, its previous name was, was such an example, but it existed for more than, uh, you know, one election cycle. So the, the danger is, as Steve pointed out, that you would have to go through the motions and have them, recommissioned, so to speak, uh, which is not what's happened in the town, as far as I, I know. And, uh, yeah, they're, they're stated to be for a limited duration or purpose. So that is, that is the standard, and if they become permanent, well, then that, that takes on a whole nother, uh, whole nother, uh, significance, and it most likely becomes permanent by way of an ordinance.
So should we just leave limited duration in then?
I, I, I don't have a problem with it. I don't know if anyone else has an opinion.
Yeah, I guess my concern is things like the, the bike and pedestrian, if it's still under that, it should go into an ordinance, and there should be some urging mechanism, maybe not a forcing mechanism, that, they don't just sort of, I'm not sure, legally, again, today, I'm not actually sure what difference it makes. Maybe so it makes no difference, let it go. But if there is any danger of, of committees that really should come to, um, the RTM or the Board of Selectmen deciding, well, this is something we wanna have as a permanent mission. We're not kinda skirting around that by just, by this.
Right. I, I, I think I didn't answer John's question clearly enough. I, I'm most certain that they do state from the onset, from the charge, that they're for a limited duration and not permanent. And the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, um, did in fact turn into a permanent board. Uh, the Racial and Equity Justice Task Force, for example, very clearly had a limited duration. And so I, I think that's the way we've always done it, and it's understood to be, uh, necessary to say that it's limited in the charge.
So what's my instruction? Where are we going on this?
Personally, I'd leave in duration, but I would defer to others if there's a strong opinion.
I would leave it in two, just to be careful.
I agree.
So there's a consensus?
Uh, that's three, four, five, six.
All right.
Unitimity.
Sounds like a consensus to me.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, uh, for catching that, uh, Mr. Vice Chair. I think that unless there's something anybody else has here, um, I made one change. I found out that the actual, um, name of your code of ordinances is the town code. So I fixed that in here. And, um, I eliminated some language in the definition of regulation that really did not apply. Uh, number one, it wasn't a complete sentence, and number two, um, it, it was not, it was something I brought that did not apply. And then also, um, on the basis of a discussion, um, I had, uh, some terminology I left from another charter on having the central town library and each branch of the library, uh, to be a place where items were to be posted. I replaced it with language that, uh, in addition to town hall, it would be any other public places as may be determined by the town clerk, as, as opposed to being specific about the library. Article two, if that's okay. Are there any other Article One questions?
I do have one. It's kinda lingering, um, that I should have raised before, but, um, the Board of Select Persons and the RTM as they're defined, isn't there some, some area where the Board of Select Persons is considered a legislative body?
In some communities, um, there are legislative functions that are associated with Boards of Selectmen. When we were going through the process of eliminating the Board of Selectmen and shifting some of their, quote, legislative authority to the, um, to the RTM, um, we found that it was very limited. Uh, that it was a contract responsibility, a limited contract responsibility that the Board of Selectmen has, and they have the subpoena authority, um, for departments. Beyond that, I could not find much in the way of what I would call legislative function, and, um,
Well, appointments.
And they, and...
Appointments.
Charter has always indicated that they are the executive branch. They are the executive. So...
For calling a charter revision?
Oh, for that purpose, understand law. In this form of government, the Board of Selectmen is considered, for whatever reasons, the legislative body for calling a charter revision. That is, uh, something I learned in this process. And, and it's something that the RTM would have had had we made the change and eliminated the Board of Selectmen. So that, again, that's, um, one of the indicators that they are not, um, that they're more of a town meeting than a legislative body, but they are still technically, legally, the legislative body of the town. In that case, they don't, they don't exercise that legislative function because we have a Board of Selectmen.
Okay. And is it worth noting, noting that in the charter anywhere?
Uh, note, noting what? That the Board of Selectmen has the power to call a charter?
Nah.
It's fine. It's a, it's a... It's pretty clear in the statutes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, we start going there, man. This will be a very long document. Okay. It's a good question, though. Um, Article Two, elected officials and, um, elections. Um, there's an introductory clause in 2.1 that I thought was useful. I actually think that, um, uh, this might have come from the town attorney. We are concerned. Uh, we wanted to make sure that, uh, since there's a lot of election, um, issues in this charter, we reserve those rights which were permitted to do, that we should put, uh, we should put that clause in here to make, make it clear that it's not just the general statutes, that we do look to the general statutes, but where there are local provisions, we follow the local provisions of law. Um, I had a question in 2.3B. This is not a John Nguyen question. Well, John answered the question. Under the RTM, we have been talking about there shall be thirty members of the RTM, et cetera. And I raised the question, do we wanna give the RTM the option of, um, reducing it down, since they have the option of dividing up the districts? Do we wanna have a standard in here that there shall be no more than thirty members? Which implies that the RTM, uh, we would have to address it somewhere else in the charter, would have the ability to reduce the size of their legislative body. So I wanted to raise that issue. If you, if it's, um, out of order from council to do so, I, I just thought as I was reading through it that it was worth at least raising and that it could be dismissed immediately. But I just wanted to raise the issue.
No, I'm glad you did, because I was gonna raise, um, the issue as well. I thought about what, um, Jim Baldwin had said, and maybe it is worth revisiting kinda not limiting the, um, the redistricting either this time or the next go-around in ten years without having to change the charter to the number of districts in here. So maybe just kinda like to your point, add in the no more and take out the number of districts so that, uh, that can be fluid. But I don't, you know, again, I'm not, you know, I don't know how anybody feels about that. John Matola, Chris Brogan, uh, in that order.
I thought, I thought we agreed, I mean, to, to keep it the way it is right now.
We did.
And so I would rather just leave it this way and then see where we are the next charter revision, which in the grand scheme of things is what, ten years away, Steve Mednick about?
Well, it's only when you, uh, did we adopt a provision here that? Did I put a ten-year provision in this charter? I don't know if we talked about that.
No, maybe you did. That could just be me thinking off the top of my head.
Uh, we have not done that. That's your privilege. You decide to do that tonight if you'd like. We do not, but state law does not require charter revisions unless you wanna do them. I've tried to put ten-year provisions in charters because, um, it, it's awfully irresponsible to go thirty or forty years, which I've, I have seen in some communities.
I thought we had that in there.
No.
No.
I don't think so.
It's not in.
But, Chris, I'm sorry. Chris Brogan had a comment.
Yeah. Yeah, one, I would, I think that's a good idea to put the ten-year provision in. And I think, um, one of the reasons we put it this way is because, um, it was pointed out that a lot of the things that got heated in past RTM committees, um, was deciding on the number of districts and the size, that if those are taken off the table, it becomes a pretty straightforward process. And I think that was sort of one of the motivators here. I also think that if we go below thirty, that's gonna be a big enough deal, that it's gonna be a charter revision thing, anyway, 'cause now we're heading into, uh, council territory. Um, so I would personally leave it the way it's, Steve has it here.
Okay, um, Jim, you had a comment, I believe.
Uh, I, I forgot where I was. Uh, we're talking about the, um, the ten-year provision? Or the...
Uh, well, I guess they kinda meshed, but the...
Yeah, we kinda brought it in, yeah.
Yeah.
Was about, um, you know, you had, you had...
Charter revision. I was, thank you. I was gonna just add that it's, it's been a fairly good tradition by the, the town to revisit it every ten, in this case closer to fifteen years. I think we've been pretty good about that. So I'm, I'm always for some flexibility, and if something's not broke, why try to fix it and pen people in in the future to something that may not be deemed to be necessary?
All right, well, I, um... So what, are we gonna put in the no more, or that's just, that's, it's just, okay, so...
So leaving it the way it is?
We are. That's what I, I...
Very good.
That's the case.
I, I just wanted to raise it. It's just something that, um...
Okay.
During my, um...
Oh, John Matola.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. Just going back to 2.2B. This is probably me being a lawyer too much. It says eligible to serve as a fair few, to serve as an elected town official. No person shall be eligible for nomination or election to office as an elector, a town official who is not an elector of the town in accordance with the general statutes. Does that mean you have to be a registered voter to run? Or does it simply mean that you, um, could be a registered voter, but choose not to, and you can still run? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think the answer is no, John. You, it doesn't mean that you, you just have to be a resident of the, of the town.
And be eligible to be someone who votes. That's it.
Yeah.
Well...
I don't wanna belabor it. I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, uh, what I'll do is I'll send you over the definition of an elector under the general statutes. That's what we go with, and I think it's...
That's fine. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so the next issue. I'm trying to see. I'm looking at my, my notes here on the side. John Nguyen raised a question. And, um, it's a relatively minor point, but he raised it, so I wanna answer it for him, uh, on, um, just under, in section 2.3D, right at the end, just above 2.4. If you go to, to subsection D two involving terms of justice of the peace, John ra- raised the question on, of why we're using the term nomination. Jim and I met with the, uh, town clerk, and I think the choices we had were election or nomination. They're not elected. They're selected, but I think the term is nominated. Not, and I think nomination, I, I put down here as kind of idiosyncratic language. I, if I had my druthers, I'd say after they were appointed. But I think, Jim, am I correct on that? That it was, uh, the choice between election and nomination?
That's, that's, that's correct, and generally speaking, they're, they're chosen by the, um, the two town committees, the two major parties.
So they're basically nominated by the party, then they're, they're put into office, so they're not elected. They are nominated.
That's right.
John Nguyen, are you okay with that?
Absolutely, yes.
It, it's odd-looking. I get it. I, I've been thinking, I thought that throughout the entire time.
It sounds like it was a thoughtful decision, and I'm okay with it.
Okay. John also raised an issue regarding subsection in 2.6, in 2.6E. And that's on the resignation and vacancies on the RTM. He ra- and we didn't, I don't think we changed much in the way of language in this section, but he raised the question, about the inability to fill a seat. Would we end up in a situation, or should we have a default in here? And I have, I'll have to read the section more carefully. Do we need to have a default if you have three people in a district? One resigns, and the two can't resolve who the third person should be, even though the party of the person is preordained by virtue of, if we have minority party representations, preordained. How do we deal with that, or are we miss, or are both John and I missing a point here?
I'm not sure who was up first, but Pam, I think Pam.
Pam, no.
Um, we have that provision. If they can't reach a consensus, it goes to the RTM.
It's, it's sub-paragraph eight.
It was not done within thirty days.
We, we have thirty days, we have thirty days to fill it at the, at the district level. If the district level can't come to an agreement, it automatically goes to the floor of the RTM.
Uh, John, you're, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
I missed that as well. Thank you, Pam.
Which actually happened once.
Um... 2.7, I'll point to that language. We created language there that I think avoids any confusion. Jim and I looked at this pretty carefully. Um, this is the situation for, um, the Westport situation, actually, where somebody's running, decides they don't wanna serve. Where do you go next? And the way our language worked is you were stuck on political parties as opposed to the next candidate who had the highest number of votes and wasn't a member of the majority party. And I think this language fixes that situation, doesn't presuppose that the, uh, that you have to skip over somebody because a person of one party didn't take the office, uh, that, that somebody of that party needed to take that office. It really should work like minority party representation works, where you go down to the next non-majority party person. And I think E covers that eventuality. The next area, I made some changes, and I know people have made comments on this, is the issue of civility. We're calling it now Rules of Civility. So they're not confused with our Ethics Code, which are the rules of conduct. And so I made some changes which are reflected in here. I think some of the changes I made were also recommended by the Vice Chair, uh, by Chris Brogan. And I know other people have made comments. So I'll leave it to you, Mr. Chair, to see if there's any further discussion.
Is there any discussion on this? Chris Brogan.
Uh, my first comment is, or my only comment really, is placement of this in the charter. I'll say, it does seem like a odd place, or not an odd place, but it doesn't cover everything. It's, it's in a part that doesn't cover everything that this covers, right? On the other hand, I haven't necessarily thought of a better place to do it, 'cause this, this article is elected, right? And elected officials in a...
It was elected and appointed. It covers everybody.
With the title, the Article Two.
No, the, you know where I think we might, it might be a better place for it? Why don't we put it in the chapter with Ethics? And have...
Thinking, you have to be careful to keep standards of conduct separate from, which I don't know, drafting-wise might be hard, I, but if you can do that, I...
We can create its own new article, pass at the end of the cha- charter, make it a new Article 11, uh, on, on, um, Rules of Civility. I prefer, my general approach on both ethics and civility is to have them at the beginning of a charter. So everybody sees, here's the, here's the standard. Here's what we wanna do. One of the problems is during draft, I mean, I could still do it. Uh, it won't be a big deal, although again, have to fix all the internal references that we've currently fixed, but we still have time to fix them, is to, um, I usually have them in, uh, the introductory chapters to, uh, let people know what the standards are. let people know what the standards are. It's usually in, um, like, uh, well, you know, let's see.
I mean, you could put it in Article One, although that's more one.
Article one is not a bad potential place for it because it's introduction, general powers, construction, organization, and standards or something.
Yeah, so definitions or something. I it's a little bit odd there, but at least you have it up front. I know how hard it is to chart changing numbers at this point.
Yeah. But I could, I could, to your point, move it out of here since it covers both elected and appointed officials. I do sometimes end up with those kinds of weird anomalies in charters where these kinds of provisions end up in these sections. Um, but I could move it to the back, uh, with its own article. And, um, you know, it's back there with ethics, so they're not afterthoughts, and, uh, we could put, we could maybe change the chapter, the article to standards and have, um, section one be code of, you know, the ethics code and section two would be civility. That might be another option.
I I kind of, oh, Pam.
I I think you should put it in the front.
In
I I hate to remember everything, but I, this is, this is a big deal. I I think it should be right up there when you open the charter.
So I'll put it in Article One. And should I move, should I move ethics up there as well?
I would, yes. That'd be my opinion.
What is everyone, I agree with putting it in Article One. Um, I don't care where. But, I mean, I think it could be one point five, just the same, but, um.
It it won't, fortunately, by putting it there, it won't alter the other articles. That's the only, that's the good thing about doing it there, so.
I'm good with that.
Sounds like a good place and the best solution as far as not making it too difficult to do, so.
Agreed.
Also move Article ten, standards of conduct, there as well.
One other point on this section, I did circulate some very limited edits and suggested language for clarification purposes. Fairly late this afternoon, around three thirty or four. If, um, I don't know if you have that included yet, Steve, or
No, I I've not included it, John, because it came really late.
Yeah, yeah.
I was working very hard, and they were, and also the way let me see if I can find them quickly here.
And I I was not a hundred percent sure that, um,
If you want to go through them, because I don't think they are that extensive. If you want to walk through it, it's your privilege.
Well, I circulated it, so I think it's easier to see in writing, but I also was not sure if Attorney Baldwin had provided his thoughts on the language that you had proposed.
Attorney Baldwin, I don't know if he's here. He and I, he and I have talked about this language extensively, but I'll I'll let him speak for himself.
Yeah, no, I I think that we we went over it. I mean, I have personal views that aren't relevant, um, here, but, um, in terms of what you drafted, I I think it's very good.
Can, 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 I don't mean to interrupt. Can someone tell us what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think we're talking about the rules.
Specifically talk about what?
The rules of civility, I think Commissioner Winn is talking about.
So, so, John, you circulated some new stuff?
I did. I, um, what I did was I took what Steve had in the document that we all received in section two point nine civility, and I added a few words under the explanation, under workplace and item B, I said workplace and town operations. So that's, that's not a substantive change. And I clarified it with a supplemental clause that says in the workplace and other town official interactions, this charter and the rest of the paragraph remain the same. And then on, um, the, um, section, um, under rules, D one, I added in the middle of the paragraph in front of this, this language that says members of the public, I said in all circumstances, and the rest of it continued the same. So it would read in all circumstances, members of the public, and all public officials will be expected to follow the rules of the body and shall not engage in disorderly conduct. Uncivil language or actions is a supplemental add I have to that section.
Let me hear that again.
Sure, it's, um,
At the very end, your your last comment.
The last comment was, um, I added the words
In all circumstances, members of the public, then after that.
And it continues the way you have it. And all public officials shall be expected to follow the rules of the body and shall not engage in disorderly conduct, uncivil language, or actions.
Oh. So that's new, okay.
That's, that supplemental statement is new.
The problem with, I can't see in your thing, because it it takes everything. Okay, so after disorderly, after disorderly conduct, you would add uncivil language or actions.
Yes, and it, this is in the email that I forwarded to everyone around three thirty or four this afternoon, and it's marked in that document as in a comment bullet off to the right.
I got it. Yeah, it it doesn't, I I work better with a red line. I'm sorry.
Okay.
And then you have one more comment?
I do have one more comment at the end of that paragraph. It says board chairs or their designees shall intervene when notified and instruct offenders to cease cease such behavior.
All right, um, does anyone, Chris, did you have a chance to look at this? I hate to put you on the spot, but you kind of seem to have taken the lead on this section as well.
Um, not in detail. I I saw John's note, but I kind of need to see it. The way my I I just, when I hover over the comments, I see what he's putting in, which makes it a hard way to the, so, so this would require board chairs, essentially.
I'm having the same problem. John Winn, can you tell me from, in the workplace, you would change the caption from the workplace and add and town operations. I get that.
Correct.
Then your next ad is in the workplace and other town official interactions. This, oh, I see. That's the new
It continues.
Of the sentence.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that seems to make sense.
I'm sorry, it's confusing. The, uh, the document I have has it in bubbles off to the right, pointing to where the wording is to be inserted.
No, I, that's exactly the way it's showing up. I I find it easier when it's a red line. That's okay. I'll grow up. I'll learn how to.
So, uh, maybe, John, that last comment, what was your thought behind that?
Uh, the board chair, certainly.
Yeah.
Um, this seemed to be describing the role of the presiding officer, which would typically be the board chair in a public meeting. I thought that it would, as far as, um, you know, the the implications of someone being uncivil, that the, um, board chairs would have the responsibility for intervening and notifying the person that their actions are being deemed as uncivil, and they should preclude themselves from acting in a fashion like that.
The only the word shall in there, and I'm, that's what I'm debating in my own mind, whether that's a shall or may.
Okay. I I'd be okay with either, Chris.
Yeah, I just, I don't know what, you know, and maybe Jim Baldwin has a better idea what the net effect could be of a shall, and for some reason, maybe they don't, and what that means. I mean, this, this is rare to give tools to the board chair persons.
Yeah, I I'll defer. I would defer to John Matola, who's got his hand up right now. He may be thinking along the same lines.
I, I'm not, I just can I just ask a process question first, uh, Jim and Steve and Brian? I, I'm not saying this is bad language or anything, but I'm gonna need to read it, and, um, we're gonna have an opportunity one more time after the public session if we wanted to tweak some of this stuff, right?
Yeah, that's
That's, that's
Probably be right after.
John, I and I, hey, John, I did the same thing. I added stuff the last minute, too, so I'm not, I'm certainly not being critical. I just want to be able to read it. You know, I think you put John's suggestions in there, and and let's read it, and then we'll leave it in. The last meeting when we vote, we'll either, you know, leave it in, and maybe we'll take some things out or tweak it. Um, and we we may do that with other parts of this, too. That's all.
What I'll do when I prepare the, uh, document for the public hearing, I'll give you a red line showing what we've done tonight, so you'll see John Winn's comments. Um, so you'll see the things we did tonight, highlighted, nothing else. And, um, and then at the meeting after the public hearing, uh, you'll have an op- opportunity after public discussion to make modifications.
I think that's perfectly reasonable, and I, um, appreciate everyone's, uh, efforts to improve my feeble attempt at trying to put some words around this, so I'm sure you all can improve it.
I I I think I have a fix for the shall. And what is it? Board chairs or the designees are authorized to intervene, so that the charter is authorizing them to take the responsibility, so that if they exercise it, they have authority.
Since, since I was asked the question about my opinion on this part, I I think that the concept is already covered by the language which Steve has in here already. So it's it's in addition to, but I don't think it it adds, uh, anything unless I'm missing something, is the
I I don't, I wasn't intending to add anything. I just thought clarification, because some of it seemed to be limiting, just talking about workplace, so I thought uh, and then no, um, description of remedy or other action.
But but, you know, if you go look at breach of rules, Jim's absolutely correct. I was looking for it, and I was looking above for it, but I actually have removal of a person in in-person meeting may be facilitated by a sergeant at arms or law enforcement officer.
Yeah.
It's a pretty strong standard. If you look down, John, John, um, um, Winn at, uh, breach of rules.
Uh, but that seems to be strictly focused on public meetings and nothing else.
Well, there's, these are rules for boards and commissions where you have presiding officers. Where else do you, you have presiding officers? I'm not talking about rules in the building. I'm talking about rules of conduct, uh, in a presiding officer. You know, of the RTM and of each board and commission. That's what, that's what these rules, these rules apply. We're saying that every board and commission needs to adopt rules of conduct, and we're giving clear charter authority to presiding officers to, um, to preside and enforce those rules. So I I would agree with, um, in that context, when I look at subparagraph two, um, I think it's more than clear that they've got authority. That's all I would say.
Yet, to me, it seems like much of the uncivil behavior happens outside of a me- public meeting. It happens in other interactions of various different types and forms, not necessarily just in a, in a regular meeting that's on fair TV or people are attending.
Well, that's what B is all about. Is the workplace. And rules of a body can govern I drafted rules of bodies, can govern, and it's not easy, and it's an evolving area of the law, can govern outside behavior. We're beginning to, I don't know if, um, Brian has addressed this up in Hartford in the legislature with rules. But elected officials are spending a lot of time on, um, on social media and getting trouble on social media politically, legally, whole range of things, and the real question is how do legislative bodies regulate the behavior of their members, um, if they're acting quasi officially, officially, not actually officially. Um, it's a very difficult thing to do, so I didn't tackle that here, but but I did propose the concept of rules. And as these, as these issues evolve, people like Jim Baldwin will be drafting rules for boards and commissions that will address those issues. I think it's covered here, um, in the in the broadest sense, um.
Okay, I would say just let's, um, you know, look at it when you have it in writing, and we can move forward from here.
All right.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's Article two. So are we gonna accept most of the language, or or what are we doing on that? On John's comments? John Winn's comments?
I thought John Matola wanted to see that, see it in writing, and then he would
Then I'll put it, then we'll put it in. All right, good. I I I just want to make sure. I have to ask a couple of times, because I don't want to make a mistake. Article three. An issue came up, and again, this is another Commissioner Winn catch or issue, and maybe we'll find out that, uh, that, uh, that it may not be, but when you're looking at reapportionment, if we're going to three-person districts, the concept of reapportionment for an equal number of members from each district is problematic. If you read the language, we didn't really, we just decided to keep the reapportionment section, but, uh, didn't read it carefully, although Commissioner Winn did. And in this, one of the mandates is to try to have an equal number of of members from each district, so that's why you have currently four from each district.
This is section three point two, capital A, small e, on page twenty.
I'm confused. What, which section?
Yeah, where?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I jumped over that one first, John. You're right. John had, um, all right, his first question is, I'm sorry, three point two, A one E. And it, oh, actually E. So that's the situation where, this is in the current charter. If you move out of your district and you're on the RTM, you remain on the RTM in your new district for the duration of your term. And the concern here was that you can end up in a situation where a district has, one district has four members, and one district has, um, two.
No, I I don't think that's the correct interpretation. It, this says that 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 member of the RTM shall remain a member in the district to which they were elected until the next regular
So they will continue to represent that district even though they moved to another district?
That's correct.
All right.
Correct.
Yeah, that's all I read it, too.
Okay, very good.
And that's the, that's the interpretation to the lo- the local god interpretation of that section. All right. But next point then. The point I jumped to, I'm sorry, John Winn, um, reapportionment. Uh, in the reapportionment section, um, the standard for reapportionment is obviously, um, to to obviously comply with, um, one person, one vote, but also to assure there's an equal number of members from each district. And under the concept of having a three-member district, which is what we are proposing, that is not possible.
I, I have a question.
Or does that mean
I'm not reading it that way.
Should have three as opposed to
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's how I read that. That means that each district has to have the same number of representatives. You can't have two members in District Two and, you know, three and three, and, you know, how are you, add it all up to get a totality of thirty? It means you've got it. Has to be a number divisible by the number of districts you have.
You all right with that?
It doesn't mean an even number.
Yeah, I could see that.
It doesn't mean an even number. I actually have a question in there.
Yep.
So we have this provision that says, um, deviation from the largest to the smallest voting district shall not exceed ten percent. Is that standard? Somebody mentioned, I vaguely recommend, I vaguely remember somebody saying something. Is that small, average, normal, the ten percent deviation? Says standard, I guess, is my question.
I'll defer, I'll defer to Brian. He may know this from state reapportionment and state redistricting, um.
Cool.
Uh, ten's the number I've seen, but I'm not sure what the
I don't remember that number. I'd have to look it up.
Okay. I was just curious.
I, to, to me, without knowing this, that, that number probably comes from the state, state statute, don't you think? The 10%?
I, I honestly don't know. I just kind of vaguely remember touching upon this and was just curious.
I think you're right.
I just want to make sure we're, we're in line with like, like this is a normal deviation. Or this is a standard deviation.
I'll, uh, I'll double check. I'm pretty sure 10% is the number I've seen in the number of charters and want to make sure that that number hasn't changed in one-person, one-vote analysis. Okay.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. So we'll leave the equal number there as long as everybody understands what it is. And I'm flipping through and that's all I have in article three. Anybody have any questions in article three? If not, article four. A question came up somewhere. Whether it was one of the emails that we've received, not emails, the, uh, letters we've received from the members of the public in four point two. And Jim and I talked about this as well, is, um, would they require two meetings a month of the Board of Select Persons? And the question is, what if there is no business and should we add, um, a clause that says the general rule is meeting twice a month unless there is no business to be conducted? So that's a modification, um, to avoid confusion event, in the event of meeting is challenged. Uh, it's a limited exception to the general rule of meeting twice a month. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that. It wasn't a, it wasn't an errata or a Scrivener's correction, so I, I put it in there as a practical modification proposed by council. If you don't think it's necessary, it doesn't need to be there.
Which section was that?
Just for clarification, you're saying there should be something that says, gives them an escape clause? Is that, is that the point here?
If they want to cancel a meeting, you have a requirement, an absolute, this is section four point two A, John. There's an absolute.
But it says, it says this, that.
Twice per month.
But it also says unless there is no business to be conducted.
That's the new language.
That's what he added.
I added that.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Sorry. Oh, yeah. I think that should be there.
Okay.
Is that the question whether or not that sentence should be there?
I'm sorry. John Matola.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I agree with Pam on that. Um, I, I apologize, Steve and Brian. Can, can I just ask a question about going back to article three real quick and RTM and, and and I know, I don't know if this is where this would go, if we want to go in this direction. I, I sent last week that, um, legal assistance language that we looked at a couple of months ago that I thought a lot of us liked. And I, I, I know the response from, uh, Steve was that, well, he put that in there when there was a thought that we were going to get rid of the Board of Selectmen. I, I think, um, well, I guess my first question, Steve, is if we put that back in, would it go in article three?
It would go in article three. That's where, that's where it was.
Okay. Um, I, I would just ask members to take a look at that language and reconsider putting it back in. I, I just, the, the RTM is still, is a legislative body under our charter. And, um, we've heard comments from the various RTM members that they have a concern about. And I'm not being critical of anyone. Please don't get me wrong. Concern about getting some of the legal assistance that they may need at, 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 from time to time. So, and this, this language still gives, in my opinion, sufficient control to the town attorney. I, I think a lot of people would be satisfied if we included this and it would be a good change. So I'm just throwing that out there. Um, I can send it, the language to everyone tomorrow. You can take a look at it again. I did send it to Steve, Brian and Chris last week. Probably should have sent it to all of you also. So, um, I, I, I just wanted to, to raise that issue.
Any comments on that from the commission? I guess they didn't see it. I would, um, add that, uh, so I did see it. And I, uh, I don't think it's necessary. I do vividly remember it. Right. Um, there was robust discussion about it and a lot of other things, but it was part of a larger plan to shift, to, to really radically shift the form of government. And it made sense under that, but by and large, you know, and, um, we're kind of breaking down what's happening. That, that did not happen at all here. And so I don't see how, um, that kind of same thought process fits in. I, I hear what you're saying. I was on the, uh, but I do think that, um, at the end of the day, uh, the, the assistant attorneys are still there and the town attorney, um, has the ability to farm out any work that the RTM, uh, you know, they should go to the town attorney. I mean, he does or she does in the case if it's not Jim, um, represent the town as a whole. And if there is a conflict inherent, um, to an issue, they can appoint someone else or let, let the RTM go get another attorney. I mean, I could, we could let them expand on this more, but I don't see the need. And I do think it was part of a larger shift towards a different form of government. So that's kind of my thought. I didn't mean to jump ahead of anyone, but, um, some of you haven't seen it and I know Pam kind of raised her hand midway, so.
Oh, no. I, I was just going to say I don't have the language. If you want to send it, that's fine, but I tend to agree with you that we didn't make the major change and we kept assistant attorneys. And one of the reasons we kept, you know, and the assistant attorneys can handle that clause. So I tend to think we don't need it, but if you want to send the language, that's fine. I'm happy to read it, but, but I agree with what you said, Mr. Chairman.
I'll send it out again. And I think, um, Steve, I think you answered one of Chris's que- questions in our email exchange. That there would be nothing precluding the RTM from passing some type of an ordinance that allows them to do something like this. Is that? Can you think of anything?
Prohibition against something of that nature. The, um, they'd have to, you know, they'd have to appear to pay for it. I think that the general standard, um, you work in a city that has a pretty absolute hold on, uh, outside legal counsel. And, um, the corporation counsel is the attorney for the entire town. And the RTM, I think you'd have to look at other RTM models to see if there's anything, um, approximating what it is they are looking for. Because again, the RTM is a legacy body. We were trying to move it from the legacy body that it is into a, a, a real robust legislative body. Most of the members of that body were not interested in that. And, um, so whether they could hire an attorney or not would be an interesting question. Uh, I don't see a prohibition, but, um, I don't see, um, an express grant where there's, you know, an, an express, um, grant within the charter for them to be able to do it. So it would be an interesting battle. I think it's a, it, it would not be good form. I think that they should work with their town attorney. Uh, I say that in every town I work in. Um, I have never found a town attorney who is unwilling to provide assistance to the legislative body or to the town meeting for that matter. Um, I've been in town meeting towns where the town attorney has, um, tried to be of assistance in steering items during discussions at town meetings. Not easy, frankly. Uh, RTM a little easier, maybe not much, but a little easier. But, um, but the town attorney represents the entire community, the liability of the community. And having a polarity, having another attorney that is not explicitly authorized in your legal document could raise a lot of questions. So is it legal? Can you do it? Maybe? Is it wise? Um, and is it legal? Maybe not. Um, I think it's an open question, to be honest with you.
Okay. Yeah. All right.
And I, I would encourage the RTM. I don't understand, unless I'm missing something, unless I haven't heard something. No one was able to tell me when the town attorney, because I've met with people, when the town attorney did not provide advice to them. Uh, so I think they should look at the system and try to operate within the system that has worked. People in this town, it's interesting because I've, I've made a lot of recommendations and I, I don't mean to engage in this, but I just want to talk generally about things I've heard. I've heard a lot of people talk about, well, let's not change this because it's not broken. It's worked. And so the question is what examples are there that would indicate that you need to change, change the system? If you haven't changed the structure of your government?
Okay. Thanks for hearing me out on that.
Yeah. No, thank, thank you, John, for raising it. Okay. Back to article four or any further?
I think so. Unless there's any, yeah, article four.
So let me see what else there is here. Oh, in article four, uh, I did raise a question, um, mainly because you acted last meeting, this is in article four, section, four point two, B, one, A. This is where we, we raised, um, we have the hundred thousand dollar threshold for approval of contracts that are exempted from the, um, uh, competitive procurement and solicitation requirements of the charter. We have a provision in here that we placed in here that the RTM is authorized to modify the threshold based upon consumer price index or other like measure indexed for inflation or deflation. And in the other place where we had a similar standard, you chose to eliminate that. I don't have a position on this. I just wanted to raise it since you had done that in, in recent, uh, in recent weeks. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I don't know. Does anyone have any, um, context or comments on that?
So that, would, would that, would the RTM have to pass an ordinance to do that, Steve?
I would, I would think you'd want to have an ordinance. If you're, if you're modifying a, uh, a charter standard, I would think that you would do that by ordinance. We could state that more clearly. Uh, if you have no thoughts on it, I, I just wanted to raise the issue.
I believe in the other place we, um, adjusted it to 500,000 to, and took that clause out to make it easier to just not have to worry about going back and monitoring it and changing it, if I recall correctly. I think the number was 500,000. So is there, is there a logical suggestion here for getting rid of the paperwork of having to, you know, run a COA examination on this every couple of years or?
That was.
Isn't the referendum, right?
Yes, I believe it was, Brian.
Yeah. And we opted not to do that because it would get.
We opted to take the COA out. That's, that's the reason we raised this issue.
So this is current language that you're highlighting to possibly remove then?
Correct.
Okay.
This, this, this is.
Well, actually, this is new language. I, I placed the language in, uh, there. The language on the Board of Selectmen approval is older language. I put the, uh, I put the threshold, um, the CPI language in there.
Oh, okay.
Some time ago. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Months, months and months ago. Didn't sneak it in.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just.
Hey.
Chris.
My only concern with the, is the RTM. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
No, I, I'm okay. It seems to give it, doesn't require anything and gives authorization. So kind of why not? It might be.
John?
And it, there's a standard that they have to follow. They just can't randomly decide to increase it or decrease it. That, that's, that's what would concern me, but you, you have to go by the consumer price index. So.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, sounds like we're good with leaving it. You want to object to that?
John Matola, do you want me to, uh, frame in here that it should be done by ordinance? Or Jim?
Sure. I think, yeah.
All right.
Right, Jim? What, what other way could they do it?
Well, that, that's, that's my point. I don't think it's necessary because it, it would have to be by an ordinance passed by the RTM. I don't think you have to necessarily say that. If you want to, okay, I guess. But then when you start to do that, any other place in the charter where you use similar language, but don't say that it's got to be done by ordinance, you know, it can create some confusion, consistency. You know, there's something to be said for it.
All right.
That's my opinion.
You know your town. Okay. The other changes are relatively minor. I may, I'm, there was a conflict between, um, some Board of a Select Person Authority and First Select Person Authority to fill positions on boards and commissions. Where there, there's no other appointment, uh, provision in the charter. And so where that is the case, both, I don't know why it was, but, but both had the same power. I made a judgment call and a recommendation that since the Board of Select Persons has the bulk of the appointment authority, that maybe the chief executive officer uh, should get appointments for the people who are not directed by the charter. Uh, so I shifted that over into one place to the First Select Person's office. So I made a judgment call. It's kind of a, kind of a Scrivener's modification with a, with a bit of a judgment call, but that's why I'm raising it to you.
Marley, did you have a question?
Where, where is that? Sorry.
I'm sorry. It's in, um, sub paragraph four, just below the contract section that we were just looking at, sub paragraph four, A.
Okay. Let me look.
Yes. Steve, this is Jim again. I'm not sure if, if the, the language which was in conflict was in the original charter such, such that there was an original conflict. I think it was in one of your iterations, um, where that, that came into existence, but I'm not certain of that.
It looks like it was in, uh, current article six point one D. I'll double check that. And if it's, if that's it, then, then it's, then it really is a Scrivener's correction.
So what are you saying there, J- Jim and Steve, that we're going to keep in that language that's deleted in four A, that, and other employees?
No, I think we're going to keep it with the First Select Woman is what we're going to do.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
You, you'll see the language is in section four point three, as we move forward, C one. That's where the, uh, parallel language is.
That's.
Boards, commissions, employees set forth.
And that's the language which I think was new to, uh, to this area of the charter. But I could be wrong, but I, I don't think there was a conflict.
I'll take a look because I have it as sourced back to article six, section six point one D of the current charter or the 2006, yeah, the current charter.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm looking at that now. The Board of Selectmen shall point the town officers, comma, commissions, comma, boards, comma, and employees set forth in section one point four, B two. And any other directors or department heads for which no other appointment.
You know what happened? Here's what happened. When I divided it.
Right.
I gave the power to the First Select Person because the Board of Selectmen went away. That's why it showed up in the two places. So, uh, tell me what you want me to do. Should we give it back to the, the board? So, uh, tell me what you want me to do, should we give it back to the, the Board or simply give it to the First Select Woman? It's not a huge shift of any authority. But, uh, that's, that's why we ended up with the two provisions, Jim.
Right.
Originally with the, it was originally with the full board, right?
It was with the full board, when I merged, when I took the full board out.
Right.
You needed the appointing authorities, she took over all the appointments, including these. And when I, when I pulled out of there, this provision remained as a provision, um, in her bailiwick. And it's, uh. Um, and that's the reason for the conflict, so we can either just, um, leave it the way it is and shift it to the First Select Woman. Select person, or put it back in the Board of Selectmen, I'll leave it up to you to make that decision.
I, I would put it back with the Board of Selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. It's amazing, Jim and I were talking about this the other day, and it didn't dawn on me that this was the reason this happened.
That's why we're here for you, Steve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. So section, let me just make a note here. Move back to section four point one. We. For A. Okay, got it? Excellent. Um, the next issue that has come up is. Did somebody, did somebody want to talk about the town administrator? Did I see? Comments on that, does anybody need to talk about that any further, I made one change in the body of the document. Uh, where I took the word public out, because I thought it was redundant. Because all of those funk, all of those, um. Job specifications or, or broad experience, um. Indicators are in accordance with best practices recommended for local government management by reputable national organizations. So I thought it was a little local, 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 re, um, public, public, public redundant, so, uh. I don't know if anybody has, uh, any, uh. Any further comment on that, but that's why I took that word out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that a lot of work was put into this, um, section, it, um. It just seems like it, it's still a little wordy and kind of unclear, I, you know, I don't feel like. It, there's a little bit of kind of word salad in my mind that goes on when I read this, it's like, there's a lot of buzzwords thrown in. Um, without really any, uh. Any help, um. So I'm wondering if there's a way to just kind of tighten this up, I mean, I don't have, I did kind of jot some things down, I mean, really, I guess what I'm flagging the most is, and I. I see what you did here and I agree with, um, removing the public, but, um, you know, in terms of. This, uh. Best practices recommended for local government by reputable national organizations. Uh, with, I read that, and I'm just like, whoa, and so, I mean, I get that we should have the Director of Human Resources. Kind of pre-qualify individuals, so maybe there's a way that we can, um, change this to say. Something like, um. You know, said qualifications should be prepared by the Director of Human Resources using those best practices. Um. And. You know, I, just, just to kind of clear it up, to just give the Director of Human Resources that, that little guidance there.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's implicit in the last sentence, maybe what I'll do is I'll break it down, uh, into subparts, and as we do that. Um, I'll, I'll break it down for the public document, you can take a look at how the subparts work. And at the last meeting, figure out what we want to do.
Okay.
And I'll see if I could, and I'll try when I break it down to see if I could fix the word salad a little bit.
Yeah, that's the wrong term, and I did not mean any of, I know that.
I, I'm not taking, no, I'm, I'm using it in the broader sense, there's a lot of words.
No, 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 and I get, the, people here put a lot of time and effort into picking these words very carefully, and so I don't mean to dismiss that, I just feel like. We're in that, in that goal, in that quest to find the perfect verbiage. We just accepted a lot of different parts and it didn't really seem to be very clear in my mind, so.
I mean, I'll try to put together, try to come up with a better dressing for you.
But we had a lot of hands raised, so that's why, so, Chris Frogger.
Uh, thank you, I, and I, I agree with the Chairman's comment, it, there is, it's a little clunky, even though I think I did one draft of this.
Better word.
But, uh, I did like, however. In there, and, and maybe somebody can tell me it is overdone, but unlike, we talked about this with the CFO and I. I understood that, that, you know, we want, maybe we wouldn't have somebody in there in that job that didn't have public experience. I think this job, we really, uh. Want to emphasize, we want somebody who's had experience doing this. Um, kind of, this isn't the same thing that we saw, we saw those gentlemen talking at the Hand in Town Council, because that was a full COO position. But I do think we should be able to attract somebody in here who has some kind of track record. And so, how we do that wording wise, uh, uh, you know, I can leave that to Steve. But I, at least in my view, I think that's what, what I was trying to say here, that we really do want somebody who's had substantial public experience. That is not coming from the private sector, or with, only private sector experience.
Okay. Uh, John Matola, sorry.
Yeah, I get it, I get what Chris is saying, maybe language in there that public experience is preferred. My only concern, Chris and everybody, is, um. You could get a great candidate who's been in the private sector, and I don't want to lose those types of people too, that's all, um, so.
Preferred always helps that wording.
Yeah, I mean, I think. Oh, Marley?
We, we can use preferred, I mean, I don't think we have to be so.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, and I think.
Straight with the exact.
Definite kind of.
Wording, yeah.
Definitely, um, you know, uh. Certain, you know, qualifications laid out, but some certain flexibility, but, you know, not. I know, there needs to be just kind of this Goldilocks-ing of the, of this, of this, uh, section, and I'm not sure where, which bed is most comfortable here, but. Steve, you were gonna say something, I think, or?
That's okay, but, um, I, I'm, I'm focusing on the word preferred.
Okay.
I was gonna see if, if, um. There was a notion of an exception to the rule, I mean, the general rule, you probably want. Somebody with public experience, but can you create an exception? Um, because you may have somebody, if somebody has worked at a public corporation, for example. Um, not talking about the tire shop down the street, um, that, um. Lives in town and is willing to take on these public responsibilities, I'm not saying that. People in the private sector necessarily know much about municipal finance, it's a very different world, uh, to be honest with you. Um, and, and people who've never done it find that out pretty quickly, uh, but you might have a rear dog who's been in the public. Uh, in a publicly held entity, which has a lot of regulatory elements. Um, not the same rules of law, but at least the same, um, environment, kind of, that you have in a, uh. Uh, in a government entity, you might want to be able to make an exception, but, um, but, um, but I. Uh, the concept here is to really try to make sure you have somebody who knows what they're doing, uh, in the local government.
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah, please.
Uh, if we're done with this topic, I want to just raise something else that I had a question about.
Yeah, I just want to know how we're leaving this, and Steve was gonna kind of rework it a little bit, and then we'll see it along with the other, you know. Is that how we're doing it?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, yeah, John, is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Alright, Mr. Matola.
So. Steve, on, uh, I'm kind of going back a little bit, not too far back, on, it's page, it's section four point three. Um. B. I think it's on page thirty.
Page thirty.
Thirty. So, the, one of the, the prints that I printed off that I'm looking at, but I, I have a hard copy in front of me, the one you sent out. I think late last week, and then on my screen here, I have the one you sent out a day or so ago. But the hard copy one, four point three, B seven. There was a section that said the First Select Person shall prepare and call to be printed or otherwise made available. An annual town report within thirty days after completion of the annual town audit reflecting the growth. Changes in status of the town since the prior annual report, I, I don't see that language on.
Yeah, um, I have a note.
That you sent out the other day.
I have a note on the one I sent out the other day that says that I, it's my understanding. That the First Select Person already gives a state of the town in accordance with the ordinances. And when I found that out, I pulled it out, I should have said something when we went by it, and I missed it. Um, if you want to make it a charter mandate, that's your, your privilege. Um, I made a judgment to highlight it, and I should have, uh, I should have just highlighted it, uh, as opposed to moved it into the comment section. So yes, you're right, that is gone.
Okay, so, so an annual report is.
Again, it was not intended to be a sleight of hand, um, I jumped over it, yeah. And that came out actually a couple, a couple drafts ago, because it's not showing up as a red line, yeah.
That's fine.
Because everybody, okay with that.
Is.
This must have been a document a few weeks ago.
I think John Matola, let's hear him out, let's see here.
I just, so the annual town report is the same as her annual address in January, is that what we're saying?
Who can answer that?
Because this is supposed to.
Well, one of them had said it had language about an audit.
This had language about an audit. So after the annual town audit, there has to be a report that comes out, which I believe reflects what the audit says. That's what I had, how I read this.
Yeah.
And John, that's, uh, what's typically referred to as the CAFR, when we have the outside auditor present their annual report? And that's typically, typically done in April, May timeframe?
Yeah, we get it every year, yeah.
Right, you get the April, April, May timeframe, correct?
Something like that, I forget, John, off the top of my head, my point is, I think this should be, we should leave it in. I think it's different than the annual town, um, state of the town address.
Yeah.
If, if I, if I may comment, oh, I'm sorry, Pam. I, I would just say, this, this may be another example of the, something left over from the previous iterations which considered. Uh, the, uh, the First Select Person to not sit on a Board of Selectmen anymore. And, uh, because I don't, I know that it's not in the current charter, and I, I believe, Steve, that may be how this. Put into it originally, and it was just never taken out, and I would add that the, the Board of Finance, not all towns, as Steve will tell you. Have to have a Board of Finance, but thi- this is certainly something within their purview, and as you well know, John Matola, something that you do. On a regular basis, a quarterly basis, you go over the audits with the, the, the administration, so. I, I thought it was a potential conflict, so I, I brought it to Steve's attention, and that's, uh, that's what happened here.
And I, and I think you're a hundred percent right, Jim, I, I, I should have picked up on that, um, so, leave it out, I don't want to belabor it, thank you.
It's good, I'm glad you raised it, though. Um. Let's see here, so now. We're back to, where are we?
Um, I think we were. Just at the appointment powers, I think we're moving into Article five.
We are. Yeah.
So in Article five, let's see here. Alright, will I merge the, I move, merge these chapters? Um. I'm looking to see, oh, and, and five point one, B three. I replaced the Town Treasurer with the Chief Fiscal Officer, Town Attorney reported, was, was supposed to take a look at that issue. And reported to me based on his discussion with the CFO, that that's in effect the way it's being done, that the Treasurer really doesn't play a role there.
Yeah.
Well, I just found another typo. Which I'm praying my editor found as well, but if she hasn't, I did. Um, eight, five point two, there was a, uh, I think, I forget who corrected me on this one, but somebody did, it might have been the Vice Chair, might have been Jim. Um, Red Star Voters, should be justice of the peace, that's been fixed. We continue in Chapter five. Um. I'm going page by page here, John Winn had a lot of erratas, we fixed, I fixed all of them internally in this section.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you're there yet, tell me when you're on, um. Uh, five point five.
Uh, we're there if you want, uh.
Five point, reminding you, five point five, five point five E, bidding requisition and payment procedures.
Where's this?
That's new, right? It's, it's on page thirty, page forty, it's, it's under the Board of Fin, um, Board of Finance, five point five. E.
I believe that's in the current charter, John.
That's in the current charter.
It is?
Yep.
That's in section, Article twelve, section twelve point nine. That's on the back of the budget section.
Yep, okay, I, I see it here, I apologize, um. But we, we eliminated, I'm sorry, this is probably a little confusing, we, we eliminated that language that talked about assessment systems, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That we did do.
Alright.
Okay?
Yep, thank you.
It's alright. Uh, flipping through, I'm in, that's it, that's all I have in five, we. We moved to six. In, in six point one. Um, actually, John Winn raised a question, is the Treasurer in or out?
Good question.
Was that your question, John Winn, just for the record?
Yeah, that was it.
Yep.
What's the answer? Baldwin, didn't you have conversations I saw with the Treasurer, or this was part of?
I did, I had conversations not only with the Treasurer, but also the CFO. Who had some concerns, because the, the Treasurer, believe it or not, uh, is on all the bond calls. And, uh, does sign the bond documents, uh, and that, that's happened recently, you know, uh, so. The, the CFO was a bit concerned about statutes which make reference to a Treasurer and. And thought that it would, uh, not hurt at all. He knows it wouldn't hurt to keep the Treasurer there, and the Treasurer is performing those duties as limited as they are, so that was his opinion.
Okay, and, um, my apologies, I didn't mean to refer to you so informally, Attorney Baldwin, I should have said, so.
Jeremy Caffarelli.
I just felt like, hey, Baldwin.
Alright.
Um, well, based on that, I would think we'd keep it in, but I'm willing to entertain arguments to, uh, to oust it. So, let's, let's do this, does anyone object to keeping it in? I don't see anybody, so we are, we, that, that answers this age-old question.
Good. Alright, I'm flipping through, see if there's any other changes here. Oh, reme- Oh, removal, I I thought I took this out earlier. Uh, I left it back in because Chris Brogan, um. Christopher Brogan, I'm sorry, I I put his name wrong on the document, the vice chair.
No, among us friends, Chris is fine.
Okay.
Where I started.
Said, said that he liked my language on removal, um, that was in the comment. But I made a judgment call, um, I I left it out of respect to Chris, but the um, that we really have not gone through it. It's a pretty important provision. If we think it's something that we'd like, I I would be. And and we're gonna, we're gonna see this again in a few moments on board and commission stuff. I remember I put a lot of stuff in about three weeks ago. On can creation of boards and commissions, um, and I made a judgment call to withdraw it, obvi- obviously with your, I'll need your consent. Because there there's a lot of interesting stuff in there, but it is, there are items that really require discussion. And so my view on it is, if this is something that's of interest, that you want to clean up the removal provision. This might be something we do when we move it over to the Board of Selectmen and see if they can uh, make a recommendation. And we'd have a um, make sure that there's a discussion between the relevant um, members of this commission. And the Board of Selectmen to make sure we come in in an area where uh, the commission will be very receptive to those changes. But in the meantime, I was going to just recommend that we move on, um, and not look at it. So I'll leave it to you to decide whether you want. To have the Board of Selectmen raise it at a later point. Okay? I don't see people overwhelmingly saying, let's, let's do it. So we're gonna move on.
So I'm sorry, so what you have here now is what was there before?
Exactly right.
Okay, so it's another base change. Thank you.
I don't think I've changed a word in there.
Uh, you might need to update the cross-reference though, in uh, B paragraph B.
I've fixed, I fixed the cross-reference.
Okay, very good.
You want me to acknowledge everyone you gave me there, John?
No, I just, I I didn't want to agree or leave the paragraph and not touch anything in it.
We will dedicate the footnotes of this document to Commissioner Winn. Uh, so, thank you. I do appreciate it, actually. Um, on the boards and commission stuff, you'll see all the stuff that's deleted and crossed out. I think a lot of this really does require more discussion than the time we have left when this came up. We were dealing with a lot of other issues. In this process, uh, this is one of my favorite provisions to throw into charters. Um, but it's usually something frankly, that we take two or three meetings to discuss. And so, um, if you really love it and you want to keep it, here's the language. Um, my recommendation is that this is something that you may think about for the future. And there may be standards in here that the administration working with the RTM. May want to try to memorialize through ordinance if they want to try to create standards of the appointments of boards and commissions. And that's all this really does. This really basically says, when you're creating a board or commission. These are the things you need to think about. These are the things that need to apply to boards and commissions. Um, I did. Leave. I thought I left. Yes, I left the language, um, and this is something that uh, the vice chair raised. Uh, on records and there should be language in here. On. Hmm. Hold on one second. The uh. Hold on a second. This is section six point nine. Records and open and public meetings. There's provision uh, in here on open and public meetings. Actually, yeah, it's uh. It's uh, in here. Um, in the red lines is obscured, but there's still section six point ten on records and six point eleven. Uh, which establishes an open and public meeting requirement that is a pretty important standard. That's basically a modification of something that's already in the document, but uh, I had moved that into the section from another section of the charter. So that's the reason I took all that out.
So Steve, six eleven A should be regular and special meetings or just regular meetings? Because there is a distinction.
Um, I thought I fixed that. Hold on a second.
What page do you want?
It's on page forty-eight, item six dot eleven.
Oh, what I did, John, is I, 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 I used the capital M, all meetings of boards and commissions. Which includes special and general.
That would work.
I can make that change. Yes. Thank you. That's a good catch.
Can I, can I just ask a question? On six nine, six ten, six eleven, but isn't this already in the document? Aren't you just restating it? Why do we now have to have it twice?
Well, it's not because I moved it from another section of the document here. So it's only in this one place now.
So it's not anywhere else in the document anymore? Now it's all in the one area?
But but six ten and six eleven were in another place. Chris Brogan actually pointed that out to me. And I moved them into this section when we were looking at the more comprehensive section. I decided to leave it here because it was a logical place for it to remain.
All right, and what about six nine? Like, why do we need to restate that? Isn't that already stated somewhere else? I mean, we all know the RTM can do all that stuff by board and commission. Why, why are we restating that one?
Um. Well, it's new. Let me see if it's redundant. I'll knock it out. Um.
Yeah, can you just speak? Because I feel like we're repeating ourselves.
Well, it's a power that exists. We've done that in a couple of places, but let me, let me see if it's as explicitly framed as it is here. It might be. Um, the uh.
All right, that'd be great. It feels, it feels like to me, we're just stating the obvious, which has already been stated, but.
Well, some people have called me a master of the obvious, so I I'm guilty as charged.
If you could go back and see that, that, you know, we could save one piece of paper, maybe.
Does everybody agree? If this is, if this is redundant, we will repeal it. We'll take it out, right? Okay?
Yeah.
Consensus? All right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Article seven.
John Mottola.
Hang on. That's all right. Hey, Steve, on. My, my screen thing, six point eight required cooperation. And I like that language. Your just notes that action question mark. Was that for the whole six series that we were just talking about?
Well, six point eight has been in here for a while, so um, I think my action question is a holdover, assuming.
Okay.
I'm assuming as, as we go through this, guys.
Leave it. Good.
That you're, yeah, um.
I'm not, I'm not saying remove it. I just wanted to know why you said action. That's all.
The action, I think, is a holdover note that I did not delete.
Okay, thank you.
When I put it in, I put action. Everybody wanted. And um, we may have gone through it or not. I'm sure. I tried to go through most everything I put in here, uh, when, when I put it in. So this has been here for a little bit. Uh, but it's a new provision. I think it's a really important provision.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Article seven. Um. I added, actually, the town attorney brought this to my attention, and I think Mr. Wind did, Commissioner Wind did as well. Um, that we had two positions in here that are not laid out in the seven point one, two to seven point twelve series. That they're actually in Article Four, so I made that fix. Um, Commissioner Winn, John has also brought up the fact. That the numbering didn't work for him and I, um, as I was going through it, the numbering did work sequentially for me. So I don't know if it's something that happened in the red line, in the conversion. Uh, there was one problem at the beginning where it changed. Alphabetical letters to uh, Roman numerals, romanettes, basically. So I fixed that as well. Um, but the numbers work sequentially for me, so I, um, and I fixed all of the internal references in this section. Um, as um. Um. As uh, John actually gave me a number of of uh, items to fix and uh. Yep, I lost my post-its here there. Okay. Um. There are no substantive changes. Let's see. Here until we get to. Parks and Rec.
I got a question though.
Oh, question, sorry.
But more of a, so, I'm sorry, I'm pulling up right here. Under the Director of Public Works. This is um, seven point six A. And and I'm, forgive me for asking this, it's probably me. Where was the language where the Director of Public Works was supposed to be an engineer? Was it, was it N A and we got rid of that language?
Wasn't here and we got rid of it a while ago.
Well, I know we did, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's where it was. Okay.
It was in A. Yeah, it was, it was, it was, um, I am comparing this section to the, this charter, this. Run is being compared to our last run. That document, that came out before. That's why you're not seeing it here. Um, what I may do for you at some point is give you a red line back to the first reorganized charter, which will be a mess. But it's probably worth having.
I want to do that.
You'll see every, okay, Pam doesn't want it. It won't, you won't get it. But but that's the reason you don't see it here.
That's fair enough.
I will do a red line because I have to do an explanatory, I have to do a letter. Um, at some point explaining all, even the little nits that we're dealing with in this charter, and we're gonna have to pick that one up. At that point. So I will do, I will do a red line for my own edification if no one else is. Seven point ten.
Uh, before we get there?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris.
In seven point nine and B three. Um, we're gonna, instead of disabled, we're gonna put people with disabilities was recommended by the director.
Okay.
It comes in here and also comes in, I think, at the uh, commission description.
Or let's remember to do that when we get to the commission. Or do we, do we go by, no, it's coming up.
No, it's coming up.
Anything else in that section?
I I, other than that, you you got the changes. Thank you.
All right, uh, the general statutes, the S needs to be capitalized. Um, the changes in seven point ten were the ones that were recommended. Uh, by the Director Parks and Rec, if you recall. I still have one internal reference. I don't know why I didn't catch that and John didn't catch it, that needs to be fixed in that section. I'm hoping my editor caught them. Um. I, so we made all the changes that they, that he had requested. In seven point fifteen, under the tax collector, we deleted. The accounting method and special exemption language. And that's, I think that's it in that article. So we then go to boards and commissions. Okay, and this is Pam, you'll see in this section, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Arconer, you'll see in this section in eight point one. Um, E, two and three, you see those deletions? Those are the sections that were in the section on boards and commissions. So that's where I took it from. Just wanted to let you see. Um. I discovered earlier this evening that Roberts Rules was in two different places, the identical sentence. So I've eliminated it in one of them already. Uh, it shows up here. I don't know where I eliminated it. I just did it in real time as we were meeting.
Um. Steve, this is Jim. The the only thing is that this is under the uh, specific appointed boards and commissions and not necessarily. Therefore applicable to elected boards and commissions. So I would put it towards the beginning of the document to cover all instead of just. The uh, the appointed boards and commissions.
I think that the language on boards and commissions. Is appointed boards and commissions is into the appointed boards and commissions. In general, yeah, because we have that chap, we have that chapter six, which is in general. So it doesn't cover the electeds. You want to have meeting language for the electeds?
I believe so. I think that's how the current charter reads and that's what what's been followed. And and I think that uh, see, John Mottola shaking his head, yes. I don't think we need to deviate from that.
All right, hold on.
I mean, we can, we can work on that offline.
Yeah, we we'd almost have to. Well, what we may have to do is we may have to, what we could do is, when we deal with the elected boards and commissions. We can make a reference to um. Because they have, that's where the Roberts Rules was. That's where the duplicate Roberts Rules was. Uh, all right, yeah, these provisions show up again there. So the real question is whether we want to have them in two different places. If you take a look at five point three, you'll see those rules are set up in two different places. So I should just leave that. Do you want it in the two places, Jim?
I I think that we want to cover both. So if that's the easiest way to do it, then then that would be fine.
I wish there was a way to consolidate it.
I wouldn't take it away. Yeah, or. If you put it in Article One, if you want to squeeze it in there, but uh, why not? Because it can't hurt, but.
Well, why don't I put it in Article One? Because it's rules of the road, it's open government, it it falls in with the other things we're doing there.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
And. Off the bat, remove it from the other two areas. Call it a day. Move on unless.
Because I really want to try to consolidate wherever I can. So let me just look where I was. Um.
You collect your thoughts. I had a point I wanted to ask about.
Is it for me?
Uh, yes, it's uh, on page sixty-two, we have seven point two oh, fire chief. Correct? Page sixty-two, seven point two oh, fire chief?
Give me one second, John. I'm trying to multit, um, I, 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 this is the.
That's, that's, that's fine. I I said I would wait until you had your.
Nope, I'm just trying to get these, these, these sections while I am, so I will take. Stuff from Article. Take the meeting stuff from the end of um. Sorry, give me one second.
No problem. Take your time.
No, this is a good one, a good. Mix. Okay, I'm ready for you, John.
Okay, page sixty-two, we have seven point two zero, fire chief. If we go way back up to the top of this section. Um, let me find the page. Believe we have town attorneys as seven point two oh as well. Yes, up on page fifty-three, top of page fifty-three, in the same section, seven point two, town attorney.
Yeah, he's section seven point two, and the fire chief's seven point two point zero, seven point twenty. The town attorney's seven point two, and the fire chief is seven point twenty.
Uh, okay, maybe I missed that. My apologies.
That's, yeah, you, you, that's what I was trying to figure out in in some of your points. I couldn't. Uh, I I was wondering whether it was just the red lines were really baffling you, but you said that the town attorney and the fire chief were in the same place. Now.
I got it.
Attorneys are often confused as fire chiefs. I'll point out for the record. Because they're putting out fires every minute of the day, but that's neither here nor there. So that, so that they are different numbers.
Got it.
Right? Ooh, good. Glad we fixed that one. Um. All right, good. I'll take care of those conversions.
I'm sorry, one other one. If we go to page fifty-seven, then the purchasing agent and the directors, they should be seven point oh eight and seven point oh nine, not seven point. Eight and nine.
Seven point eight and seven point nine. Why should there be oh nine? We're not, we don't, we don't have that system.
What's the next section? Seven point ten, seven. What's the next section, seven point ten, seven point.
Seven point ten, seven point eleven.
Right, so, seven point nine would be, I'll call you tomorrow, I'll, I'll go through these with you tomorrow by phone, we don't need to take everyone's time tonight.
All right. I think they work sequentially, but we'll talk tomorrow, give me a call.
Okay, yeah.
Happy to talk to you. Uh, police commission, fire commission, nothing there? I wanna make sure we catch that human services thing.
Eight point one three.
Oh. Eight point thirteen, okay.
Eight point, yeah, thirteen.
All right, you guys are confusing with the one threes, okay, here you go, so then we have to change what?
So in A, uh, halfway through, you'll see the other disabled.
Yep.
That should be people with disability. I did not go back, I think we also got a note early on from the Chair of that committee. I think we did all the comments, but I'll try and remember to go back and read that again.
Okay. I'm trying to see everything else. Somebody did come through. Um, somebody did raise the question, I wanna bring it up because it came in the last day or so, and I don't know if everybody saw it. And I, I, I want Jim's to pay attention because he's the one, one who requested the change. Somebody named Kathleen Griffin, uh, raised the question about why are we changing?
The Golf Commission, yeah, the Golf Commission.
The Golf Commission and the Ethics Commission, why are we doing that?
From July to April.
Came in.
I actually had the same question.
Yeah. Pam, you did.
We moved the Ethics Commission to the same appointing date as the Golf Commission, that's what we did.
Does that make sense, though, is, is my question?
I have no position.
I, I was the one who, well, I, I was the one who raised the issue, um, here's the problem. The Ethics Commission was getting appointed in July, I didn't have a recommendation as to what month it should be recommend, it should, the recommendation should happen, but I know that it shouldn't be July. Um, the, the RTM tends to recess, recess during that month, and it's not a good time to have it be mandated for an appointment. So, I think it ended up in April just because there was another appointment being done in April, which is golf. I mean, it could have been, the Human Services was appointed in April and it ended up there, I, I, I think that's just how, where it, where it landed. I think you, and, you know, maybe Commissioner Brogan, you could speak to this a little bit, I think that the thought there was to get it out of the November appointments with everything else, kinda have it be standalone, but do it concurrently with something else.
Hey, that, that's right.
And honestly, April, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, we found a couple of times where we had, we didn't have enough people on the, on the Ethics Commission because the RTM didn't meet for, I think, two months or didn't take it up or whatever. So we thought, I, why it's not in November, I don't know, that's been in there forever, so that's fine, but April seems like an active period where the RTM's meeting, so it seems good to me.
All right, so we'll leave it the way it is, I'll have to do a transition provision, Jim, maybe you and I could talk and find out what the, uh, who the current members are, when their terms commence, because I'm gonna have to do a transition that works off of the current members.
Your thing.
All right, what else do we have here? Board of Library, we made the change, the chief, um, this is eight point sixteen. Um, we made the changes recommended by the Library Director, uh, replacing the, uh, Town Treasurer with the Chief Fiscal Officer, and the other changes that he had requested. Now, I think I should, um, give up the floor to John Matola, we're in the, no, we're in the budget section. Article nine. And I think there are only, well, a couple of changes in here on, um, yeah, I had the new language on how the multi board budget workshop would work, I think John Matola has some alternate language. Some dates that we talked about at the last meeting. If you take a look at subsection B of, um, nine point three B, I'll go through these quickly because John Matola has proposals on almost every section, so. And then we put a, we changed the date in nine point five C from the third to the fourth Monday, which is the day that the budget is submitted to the RTM, again, there's Matola alternate language there. And that's it, that's it. So, this, I'm, uh, this, I think is gonna be a, a discussion point for you guys tonight. Okay, Pam?
Anybody mind if I just jump ahead on John, I know he had a lot, but I have just one thing that I wanted the commissioners to think about because I was trying to figure it out correctly in my head. Um, and that's with, um, B two, multi-board budget workshop. And where it says the rules may permit expansion of the workshop to include the RTM in the event, RT, RTM committees, not to exceed nine members would participate as a rotating group of interlocutors, whatever that, I, I, I can't pronounce that word. Therefore, I don't like it and don't like it here.
People ask questions, yeah.
I can't pronounce it, so I don't want it, but that's okay, to participate in the questioning and submitting parties. Okay, so here's my thing. Currently, if you were to, if we were to pass this and the RTM were to keep its rules to regulate, we have five committees, let's say we drop down to thirty members, that means we have six members on the committee. If the RTM were to decide that they want to have, for example, three committees, and they evenly divide them, that would put ten people on a committee, we have this not to exceed nine rule. So, and conversely, I don't know what it means, I don't know how the charter questions are gonna be written. If we stay at forty members, we have eight people on a committee, then not to exceed nine works, but, so I'm, I'm just struggling with the, this not to exceed line.
I, I only put that in there, I thought we talked about it just so, one of the questions John Matola had raised was just a huge number of people, and I was just arbitrarily coming up with a number, it could be ten as easily as nine, so that, if you think ten is the outside, I mean, the other thing you could do is a committee of the whole, all thirty or forty, depending on how big the, the group is.
No, no, we, I think, I think we're all, I think we're definitely in agreement that the best way to handle that is through a committee system, should the RTM choose to.
If you think the number ten is the outside number, then I don't have an issue with that. And I.
That's sort of where I came to, but I kinda wanted people's opinion. I, I didn't know if it should say not to exceed more, more than one committee at a time, but then I thought that was getting out there. I think in every iteration, I sort of ran in my head ten seemed to be the outside number. I don't know if anybody else has any thing they wanna offer on that.
I don't think there's a substantial difference between, uh, nine or ten, and I think ten would work as well as, as nine.
Okay, and then you leave yourself the wiggle room.
Yep.
All right, that was, that was my only thing.
Well, it was easy.
I'll leave the rest of the discussion.
Okay. John Matola, I think, has some concerns or cha, uh.
So Steve, did you, did you just, uh, did, did you incorporate my language or just, we're here, okay, I just wasn't, I thought you said something in the beginning, okay, um, I sent everyone my thoughts about this.
I, I muted myself because I was hoping you heard enough of me this evening, the, um, I incorporated it in my version so that I could follow along, but I didn't have it early enough to send out yesterday, so.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Um, so here my, my, I, I sent this to everyone, I think section.
They were clear.
You were, okay, section nine point one E. I just think we need to just have language that states that the first select person, chair and board of finance, the Chair of the Board of Finance, the moderator of the RTM shall work together to establish a budget calendar for each budget year, and then have that published by the last Monday in January. I don't think we need all this language, I, I gotta tell you, I don't think it's ever been an issue where there's a problem with respect to, uh, coming up with our budget calendar during the year, and I think the section nine point one E, um, just kinda overly complicated to be quite honest with everyone, so that would be my first suggestion. I also think for.
John, do you want?
Can we comment as you go, John?
Yeah, yeah, sure, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, my, well, my, my only suggestion to that would be that you have a point person for it, so perhaps it's that this fiscal officer coordinates with those people.
Sure, yep, so I'll have the Chief Fiscal Officer, I think he does that now anyway.
Right, so then you would just be solidifying what we're, we're doing, because I think if you just leave it to all of them, they're kinda like who, what, where.
Yep, I get it. So it's, it's the Chief Fiscal Officer will, will be the point person to coordinate the calendar and, and I think it happens every year anyway.
Make sure you give it to anyone, yeah.
But, uh.
Yeah, and then, and then you've got somebody to hold accountable.
Right, but would, is it gonna be the Chair of the Board of Finance or the Head of the Budget Committee of the Board of Finance? I thought that, that Budget Committee.
No, it should be the Chair. No, it should be the Chair of the Board of Finance.
Yeah. And a lot of times, John, when to be honest with you, the, the Budget Committee person on the Board of Finance coordinates this with the Chair, and then the Chair does the scheduling along with the Chief Fiscal Officer and the first select person, they all coordinate this anyway, so.
Very, very good, thank you. All good.
Okay. And then, I think on section nine point three B two, I added, I changed the language and, um, let me just look at it real quick.
This is the budget workshop language.
What I want to, yeah, it's the workshop language, which, I, I think our intent is the joint Board of Selectmen, uh, Board of Finance budget meetings are gonna be the, that's where most of the work's gonna go with respect to going over the budget. That's what, that's how we did it a few years ago where the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance met together, and they, um, we, you know, we'd have those meetings that the Board of Finance does now to go through the, the budget, interview department heads, ask those appropriate questions, so that, that's the intent here. Uh, and what I say, I say after the first select person makes his or her joint budget presentation to the Board of Selectpersons, Board of Finance in RTM, the Board of Finance along with the Board of Selectmen shall convene joint public budget hearings which shall take place in the month of March to hear and consider the first select person's recommended budget. These hearings shall be called by the Board of Finance and chaired by the Chair of the Board of Finance with full participation by Board Select, uh, Board, Board of Select members. And then I have the language in here that gets the RTM involved. These public budget hearings may permit for the inclusion of RTM committee members no more than nine, but we can put no more than ten, where the budget presentation covers a topic or a department which said committee has jurisdiction over. So, so what we wanted to do, if we literally talked about this, this is gonna make it more efficient. We had that big meeting that kicks off the budget process. First select person gives his or her presentation to a joint meeting of the Board of Finance, Board of, Board of Selectmen in the RTM. So she only had to do that once, now she's doing it three times, and that is covered in section B one. And then the next section would be what I just read. Then, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, they had their budget, uh, budget hearings, I'm saying budget meetings, but they're really budget hearings along with those various RTM committees where appropriate. Um, it's not a workshop, and, um, you know, a workshop tends to be, you know, we're, we're, we're creating a budget, that's not what we're doing here, that's not what we're doing here. First select person creates his or her budget based on his or her vision of the town, and then the process moves forward, so that, that's my suggestion there.
Can I, can I jump in with one question on that?
Sure.
Sure.
And your section nine point three B two, John, the one that you just read, the section that starts with these public budget meetings, the, the, you know,
Hearings?
Three lines from the bottom, instead of may permit, should we say shall permit? Because shall is the, uh, nomenclature we use in all the other parts of this?
Yeah, I don't care if you wanna put that, absolutely. So that, that's that, and then.
Hold on, Pam, hold on.
Any other questions?
What, yeah, I do, thank you, John. Um, these hearings shall be called by the Board of Finance and, and I know it chaired by the Board of Finance. What does that mean, these hearings shall be called by the Board of Finance, if we, if?
Yeah, I think that conflicts with the language that just discussed about the, the CFO set, setting the schedule by.
Right, like we just went through the whole, the whole.
That's fine, I, I can work around that language. We can just say that these hearings shall be chaired by the Chair of the Board of Finance, but, but, I guess what I'm trying to say here is that that's fine, I, I can, I can, I understand what you're saying there. There's already gonna be the hearings already scheduled in the calendar for March, so we, we can, I can work that, work around that language.
So maybe just say the hearings that are scheduled shall be chaired by the Board of Finance, etc.
That's fine, thanks, John, yep.
Steve? So, I, I don't care whether they call it a workshop or a hearing. Um, hearings loftier, obviously, but, um, than a workshop, but, um, this is a process that is commenced, and, and the reason I drafted it the way I did was commenced prior to submission to the Board of Finance. So the Board of Finance technically does, has no jurisdiction at this moment. We've created this joint hearing to allow the bodies to, um, try to operate more efficiently in the development of the budget and their knowledge of the budget. But, but the, but the Board of Selectmen hasn't yet acted on it. And therefore, the budget has been proposed publicly. The first select person has, um, spoken on it publicly and now presented it to the two or three boards, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and, and hopefully the RTM. And the reason I set the Board of, the, the Chair of the Board of Selectpersons in as the presiding officer with, with, with probably a, um, a, um, turnover to the Chair of the Board of Finance when the Board of Finance members ask questions is because technically the budget is still at the Board of Selectmen. From a legal perspective, that's where it is jurisdictionally. And, and so that's the reason it's not a Board of Finance hearing. It is a joint hearing of two or three bodies while the item is still technically before the Board of Selectmen, and that's the reason that I placed the Board, the, the Chair of the Board of Select, uh, Persons as the principal presiding officer. Again, you may recall in the last draft, there were two turnovers. Uh, the third turnover would be to the moderator of the RTM. If there's members of the RTM that are participating, that the moderator of the RTM would take over as the presiding, um, as the facilitator at that point. You wanna call it whatever, it's a public hearing, not a workshop. Um, I'm not sure what the distinction is, but I really, you can call it whatever you want if that's what you call them. Um, but that's the reason I had placed the chair um, uh, in the place, it, it put the first select person in the chair.
Oh, Steve, that, I would tell you when we had, wha, wha, when we had the combined meetings years back, it was, it was done the way I wrote it, so. And so we're doing a charter revision, we can do it this way, right? There's no prohibition.
But it's still, or I'm, I don't wanna get into a debate, but the only point I wanted to make is that it's still technically within the jurisdiction of the board of selectmen. I don't know why somebody else would be the prime chair.
How would, how would, I just don't see how the board, how would the first select person run a meeting, joint meeting on her budget? It, with the board of finance there? That, that doesn't make any sense either.
I agree.
How does she run the meeting when she's meeting with the board of selectmen? Uh, I think she presides over the current budget meeting with the board of selectmen. This is basically still in the jurisdiction of the board of selectmen. And that's why she would preside. My, the way I set it up is that I think she would defer to the chair of the board of finance when it was time for the board of finance questioning to take place. And there's a possibility that there might be a question for her, and she might have to defer to the second select person or somebody. Or to the chair of the board of finance, would be her choice. But the item is still technically in the jurisdiction of the board of selectmen. That's, um, I'm just being a purist in terms of the way I write um, these things because I look at jurisdiction. And, and this is not yet over at the board of finance, this is still in the board of selectmen. I'll stay out, you can debate.
Pam, did you, yeah?
Um, no, I, just listening to that, it ma, it actually makes a lot of sense. And I, John, I totally understand that was the history of the way that we were doing it, but I, it, it does, I, I'm a process person myself, and I, it just makes sense to me that it's still owned by another entity. I don't think that it should jump over that. So I, I, I tend to agree with what Steve said. Um, I know we did a little bit differently in the past, but this makes more sense that it would stay at the board of selectmen and that's where it would be run from.
Well, so, uh, tha- then, get back to my point two weeks ago. Why are we changing this anyway? So.
I think respectfully, we're trying to work out a process where everybody gets to hear from one another. And we get to, and I think, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Mr. Matola, but you know, we were all in a, in somewhat of agreement that, you know, it made sense for the, for, at a minimum, the board of selectmen and the board of finance to be together and having these discussions. Um, it, I don't think that it needs to be a, fall apart over who's gonna preside over a meeting. These are two cooperating bodies. Um, and if the first select person is the first select person who generally chairs the board of selectmen meeting, and that's where this jurisdiction is, and they're bringing in the board of finance to join them in that hearing, it would make sense that that person chairs it. I think that the consternation here is becoming, because the board of finance allowed the board of selectmen to join them, the board of finance ran it. But here what's happening is the board of selectmen is allowing these other entities to join in with them, and the first select person is running that. And I think that we have to be a little bit more flexible in that, in that we're all moving in a slightly different direction than from what we've done in the past. And um, I, I, I see a path where that does make sense if you look at it from that perspective.
Yeah, I-
I don't wanna see us flip back into a place where we're each trying to have our own, and I don't mean this in a disrespectful or mean way, each have our own turf. I, I think the whole idea here was to try and get some type of collaboration to have that back and forth and, you know, play off of one another with, you know, with lack of a more eloquent way to say that, so.
I think, uh, I mean, in terms of kind of, I'm seeing the process, someone who admittedly has not been part of the board of finance or that, you know, process whatsoever, but understanding that this is the beginning stages and that the, that will still be kinda kicked off after this to the board of selectmen to have deliberate, have their vote, then the board of finance, and then ultimately the RTM. I find this somewhat akin to like at the state level when they have these budget presentations and informational hearings. When the governor presents his budget, it's not the governor, but it's the OPM secretary who presides over these um, presentations to the bodies that will then ultimately, the appropriations committee that are joint uh, at the legislature, take it up on their own after the budget is kinda handed off in a similar fashion as it, it happens at the town level. And so um, it, it does kinda make sense in parallel, that kind of executive track of someone just for organizational purposes, um, you know, cha-chairing those informational hearings or if it, if it's really called chair, but there are other people that are deferred to at those meetings. And um, yeah, I mean, I, I think logically this is the, the way it makes sense, but, and I agree with Pam that.
I think they're more than informational hearings, so, but the, the intent was for the BOs and BOf to have those detailed budget hearings over a two or three week period like the board of finance does now. And the intent wasn't to defer the board of finance's authority and power to the board of selectmen to run the meeting. That's, that's not the intent, and if that's the direction you're gonna go, I think you're gonna have an issue with it.
I, I, I just wanna, I really, John, I sincerely respect what you're saying. I'm trying to marry everything together here, I'm, I ha, I am. I, listen, I, I understood exactly where you're coming from on the number of people in a meeting. I understand what it's like to come from a, from a nine-member body. I understand where the control has been in this process. But with a little bit of an open mind, I think that we need to remember this is not about one person, meaning an entity having control over another entity. All this is, is an opportunity for people to be in a room together to do a Q and A, and you're doing a bit of a shift in that it's staying now as the invite of the board of selectmen instead of an invite of the board of finance. It's really that simple. You still have control over every single thing that you controlled before. You can still deep dive on every single thing you did before. There's nothing to prevent you from asking for questions, there's nothing to prevent you from bringing people in front of you again, there's nothing to prevent anything that happened there, other than the entity that has pu- I know you're shaking your head, but please, come on.
No, I'm not, I'm not, no, I was, I'm listening to you.
Okay, all right, all right, good. I, I just sleep on it. It, it's, you're not losing what you think you're losing. And listen, I'm not on the board of selectmen, I'm not on the board of finance. I'm literally trying to be a mediator here, trying to get you to think all of the people. Cause I know that it's not, I, I know that you're representative of more, in a bipartisan fashion, of the members of the board of finance. But let, let's just try and think about this in the way that Steve presented it. If we take a little bit of a break and think about that, it makes sense. Maybe you won't get there tonight, maybe you'll never get there, but I do ask that you just think a little bit, oh, everybody, the board of selectmen and the board of finance, think about that. And again, we're setting a charter for the next ten years, we're not setting a charter for next year. This is, you know, it'll be in effect for next year, but it's really for when we're all gone and what would be a good practice. So I, I just, I, I encourage you to think about that just a little bit. And, and I hope I'm not overstepping, I do mean that very sincerely.
And I, I would like to, I didn't see any hands shoot up, so I'm gonna take this opportunity to add. I mean, the, the reason why I'm, you know, I didn't find the word workshop, um, you know, I found it to be fine, but I get what you're saying, John, that it's not really crafting of the budget. And the reason why I think that maybe informational hearing is more appropriate is there's no formal action happening at these meetings whatsoever. I mean, there, there are no votes taken, nothing, nothing. There are no, there's no formal action whatsoever. It's just a presentation by and large by the first selectwoman and her agency heads and answering questions of all the bodies there. And, and then kicking it off to the normal process where everyone can continue to do uh, what they are authorized to do. So I, I do not see this as a transfer or an impingement of authority. So that's just my view on it.
How, how, so, so I guess the question is, how many meetings would the board of selectmen, board of finance have? I, I, I don't, I-
Pam, do you have-
You're setting that calendar, li- listen, you're, it's all in what you're setting with the calendar, right? You, you just did it up in nine point E, you're good, he's the CFO, he or she will have to work with those people to establish the calendar. So if the board of finance chair has input on what they want that, that's where you give your input. I want eighteen meetings.
No, we don't want eighteen meetings, I can tell you that, so.
But that's where, but that's where nine point one E comes into play.
All right, well, I've heard you, um.
Is, is there a consensus that you want me to-
I, I don't, I'm not quite sure what changes you're gonna make, if, if-
Well-
If, are you gonna use my language or the language that you have there?
Well, very, at a very simple level, the concept of public hearing versus workshop, is that something that people-
Not a workshop, it's a public, it's public hearings on the budget.
Hearing you, I'm trying to figure out whether there's a consensus that that is appropriate. I'm not arguing the case, I don't care one way or the other. Um, is there a consensus that everybody okay with the concept of being public hearing? Um, I'm not sure how it's a public hearing because the public isn't speaking.
Yeah, I, I have, I have-
Meeting, yeah.
To your point, Steve, and also elsewhere in the charter, we have the, the public hearing which is required and still required, to your point, which does allow for public comment, so I would avoid that term.
Call the meeting a public meeting, but it's, I'm not sure how it's a hearing.
A public hearing, Jim, have been interpreted under our current charter as our budget hearings.
Am I confusing the public meeting with the public hearing then?
Yes.
Yep, that's how I see it. The public hearing by, we have public hearing, hearings by the board of finance during the month of March.
Right.
Those are our, the public meeting in the charter is the date we vote on the budget. That, we have to do that one month prior to the annual budget meeting by the RTM.
There's, there's the public hearing which is required to have it, this, in the current version, it's required to occur in March. That's when you usually have it on a Saturday. So there is a distinction between the two, and we have to be careful that we don't confuse them. That's my only point.
During the budget meet hearings that take place, it's public comment, it's not, it's a public-
This is a different, a different, uh-
The current charter language is public hearing prior to the public meeting.
Yeah, and that public hearing is the one, John, where you have the public go and you typically-
Saturday, yeah.
That's right. And, and so it's, it's, it's a, it's, it's got meaning and significance, the difference between public meeting and public hearing, and, and we should not conflate the two. Uh, later on, when you talk about the board of finance and its role, nor should you, you insert it, I think, into this part of the discussion about the joint meetings, cause it can only lead to even more confusion than it already has.
Sure, I get it.
So you want me to move it from workshops to meetings? Joint meetings? I, I, you know-
Yes, I, I do, cause I got all confused myself, and I had to read, I had to read the whole thing like five times to remind myself. The meeting is the meeting, the hearings when the public comes, even though they're all public meetings.
But we have a bunch of hi, public meetings anyway, so when we consider the-
Correct, you've got a gazillion public meetings, and then we have this hearing on the budget.
Yep.
So in light of that clarification, is workshop okay?
Oh, it's meetings.
Meeting, okay. Everybody? The joint budget meetings? Is that all right with everybody? All right, good. So what I'll do is I'll go through that section, look at that, I'll look at some of other, John's language to see how it works in, um, so that we will have a slightly modified language in the public hearing document that you can make a final judgment on uh, after the public hearing. So I'll try to integrate.
Yeah, are you gonna look at, can you, can everyone, maybe Steve, you look at it, the language with respect to when certain things have to be done? I just think um, like section nine point four A.
We, we haven't got there, we'll get there next, I'm not gonna go into this section right now. I'm not, I'm not brushing you off, sir, we're just going section by section.
So we good on nine point three B two for now?
All right, I'll work on it.
All right.
Um.
The nine point four A.
Yeah, so that, so that, that section states that the board of selectmen shall make its budget recommendations by the fourth Monday in March. So I just, for, so if you just use twenty twenty-three as an example, that would be March twenty-seventh. And then section nine point three B one provides that the joint meeting where the first select person presents his or her budget to the uh, uh, board of selectmen, RTM, needs to happen no later than the second Monday in March. And that would be March thirteenth in twenty twenty-three. I just think that's too short of a time period to have meaningful joint board of selectmen and board of finance meetings. Um, it would only give those two bodies two weeks to have their joint budget meetings. And just generally, the board of ed would usually take about three weeks to go through the budget with two meetings per week. Not like every night having a meeting. Um, so I think my, I, I, I think what we should do is that the joint presentation by the first select person under nine point three B one, I think it needs to happen the, the last Monday in February, and that would be February twenty-seventh. That kick, as I said, that would kick off the budget process. Um, and, and I don't think that's unreasonable because just this past year, the board of selectmen had their budget meetings February twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-eighth. This, this, by doing it by the first Monday in February, that would give the first select person, it would still give that person more time to formulate the budget because she wouldn't have to make that presentation till Monday, February, the first Monday in February, where prior she probably had to get that budget done a few days before February twenty-third timeframe, when she had to make the presentation to the board of selectmen. And if, if you did it that way, this would give the board of select and board of finance time in March to have those comprehensive budget meetings. Uh, and then the board of selectmen can still vote no later than the fourth Monday, as outlined in nine point four A. So um, I just think we need to take a look at that. My, my intent, my intent is to have those joint meetings of the board of finance and board of selectmen, comprehensive meetings where thereafter, the board of selectmen and the board of finance probably wouldn't have to really have any other significant meetings, maybe just some general follow-up meetings. So um, that, that's, that's why I, uh, I, I propose that.
Steve, do you wanna chime in here, or do you want me to, to, to address that?
You had more detailed discussions with the CFO, so.
Well, I, I'm actually just going to the actual language, John. Um, I, I think that it says that not later than the second Monday in March, the first select person's budget recommendation shall be submitted to the um, board of finance, RTM for initial review. That is the kickoff date for these joint meetings, in essence, and-
That's too late though, Jim. That's too late though, Jim.
So, so three weeks i- is, uh, is.
No, the Board of Selectmen would have to vote on, two weeks after that on. The, the, the language now says that the Board of Selectmen votes on the budget the fourth Monday. So the second Monday is the joint kickoff meeting with all the town bodies where the first select person makes her budget presentation and then. Two weeks later, the Board of Selectmen votes on the budget. So you would give the Board of Select and the Board of Finance. Under that scenario, less than two weeks to have those, what I thought we wanted to do would have the comprehensive budget meetings.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I think, I, I, I appreciate that. I think the language is written such that it's, it's not later than the second Monday. With the intention being that, that the calendar, when it's created, as has been discussed already. That's going to be worked out and coordinated. So that's just the must, that's the, the absolute latest date. And I think if you're, if you're working together to create a reasonable calendar, that would certainly be taken into consideration. I think that's what, why that's written the way it is.
Uh, well, I think you should have not later than the last Monday in February, something like that. So, but. I, I understand what you're saying.
But John, which date do you want? Not later than the what? The?
That, the, the, the last Monday in February should be that kickoff meeting.
So that's a full month. You're suggesting a full month before the Board of Select person's vote?
Yeah, right around there. Or you could do it maybe the first. Yeah. I mean, I'm not calendar here. What I, what, what I do.
The first Monday. Can you do it? Can you do it the? Can you do the first Monday in Mar- in March? No, I, that's okay. Can, can you do it the, the first Monday of March?
No later? I, I guess you could do that too. Yep, that's better. I mean.
No la- no later than the first Monday of March?
Right.
Okay, you want, you want to try and work with that?
Sure.
Okay, let's try that then.
Is, is there a consensus?
It sounds to me, uh, there is.
Can we, can we, we, can we work out the timeline offline? Can we like just double check everything? I mean, we don't have to vote on this thing tonight, right? I mean, because this stuff gets confusing.
Well.
I, I think it's gotta be written down again.
You're gonna vote on a package tonight to prepare the public hearing between now and our final meeting, we can. Um, look at the, the section and presumably there may be people who actually testify on this at the public hearing. So there'll be clear reason to, um, uh, to, to go over it. So, um, I think we should. Act on whatever we have a broad consensus on this evening and, and then finalize it after the public hearing.
Okay, well, why don't we leave it like the, with the first week of March and work with that?
Okay, first week in March. We'll make that change the first week in March.
Well, are, are you saying the first week in March or, or the first Monday?
No, no, the first Monday in March, not later than the first Monday in March.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Yep.
That's why the flexibility is there saying no later then because sometimes that can be the first of March and sometimes it can be the seventh of March. So.
Yep, okay. Yep, you're, you're right. I'm sorry.
The current, the current Charter isn't that specific. It just says you have to have things submitted a month before. For example, the, 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 the better way to do it is that, well, I'm not going to get into it now, but the current Charter talks about just. I- i- it's not that specific. It says things like, the recommendations of the selectors shall be submitted to the Board of Finance, not later than. Two months before the annual budget meeting. So in the annual budget meeting, as we all know, right now is the first Monday in May. So. Um, but in any event, let's keep that language in there. Um. Um, I guess on section B nine point five, I had some comments on, but. Uh, I think given what was talked about with respect to the public hearing, um.
Yeah.
We should probably just leave that alone. The only thing that I haven't, that I think I, I might have an issue with, I'm just looking at my notes real quick. It says that the, I guess, section C nine point five C. Um, that's when the, after the public hearing, that's when, uh, the Board of Finance holds its public meeting to vote on the budget and it's here. No later than the fourth Monday in April. Um. I, I, I think that is, um, it should be no later than the second. Monday in April. And my reasoning is that if you do it that way, you still give the Board of Finance plenty of time to have any follow-up meetings. Um, I'm concerned about pushing a Board of Finance vote on the budget out to. The fourth Monday in April. This, 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 it gets into, and this may sound. A little, um, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what word to use, but it's important to me. It, that's, and Ap- April is, we have, we have a week of schools being shut and April vacation. And obviously, when the Board of Finance votes on the budget, one of the key things that votes on is the Board of Education budget. Um, and, and, and I'm concerned that doing something like that, stretching it out to the fourth Monday in April is contrary to having. You know, public engagement in the budget and, um, that, that's my concern. So I think where it says. The Board of Finance votes on the fourth Monday in April, I think it should be, um, the second Monday in April, not the fourth.
So you're giving the Board of Finance how many weeks to hold hearings? That's the question that I have. I thought you want more time, but.
No, we don't want, I, you're, we're missing, missing the point. The, the, the hearings. And maybe I'm missing the point. I think, I thought the intent when we discussed this about a week or so ago was. Let the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance have those joint hearings where the bulk of the budget work will be conducted. And we're gonna give those two bodies, based on what we discussed, almost three weeks to do that work, kind of like what the Board of Finance has right now. And if those meetings are comprehensive and effective. Then the Board of Finance isn't gonna need to have many follow-up meetings when it, when the budget comes to the Board of Finance after the Board of Selectmen votes. Kind of what happened, Jim, when we had combined meetings before, we'd have those combined meetings for that three-week period. And then the Board of Selectmen voted, it came to us, and we would have maybe one follow-up meeting, two at the most, and then we would vote on the budget.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not arguing with you. I didn't mean to. I was just making, making sure that that was your intention and, and I have no issue with that. That's, uh. That's, uh, that's your call and, and the commissions.
Yeah, and I think, I think if, you know, the Board of Selectmen votes on. The, uh, the one, two, three, fourth Monday in March. That would give the Board of Finance, um. Like a couple of weeks to do follow-up, any follow-ups that it had, had to do. So. That, that's my thought process there.
Okay.
So I guess the short, the short change would be to change that. It would be change that to the second Monday in April, not the fourth.
Can, can we leave it just the way that it is for now, uh, with the understanding that we could all look at this and then come back? I, I want to be respectful of what you're putting out there, John, but I also need to look at the calendar and back in all these dates.
What's a good thing to do is print out a calendar and, and write the dates in, so you can see it. That's what I did.
Yeah, yeah. Would, would that be okay if we just let it be and then we'll, we know that we'll have the, continue to have the discussion after the hearing?
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, all right, so that's it on budget, I think. Unless somebody else have anything else?
Um, I don't see anybody raising their hands.
So, are, are, we decided earlier that we're gonna move chapter, I'm sorry, Article Nine Standards of Conduct to the beginning, Article One. And there were no changes, are there changes? There were no changes in that section.
I have one comment.
Yes.
Yeah. On, uh, ten point four, fair and equal treatment. There was a line, I think it was added in an earlier version and I missed it. Uh, about, moreover, the second sentence, I guess. Moreover, no town officer, employee, RTM member, member of Board of Commission shall falsely impugn the reputation of a member of the public. Um, that's not in this current one. I think. I have a couple of questions about it, I guess, comments.
It's, it's in my current version. I don't know how.
It is?
I did not delete that provision.
Nine point, I have the same question.
Ten point four.
Nine, it's not nine, it's, uh.
Ten point four.
Ten point four.
Moreover, no town officer, employee, RTM member, or member of any Board of Commissioners shall falsely impugn the reputation of a member of the public.
All right. Uh. Sorry, I should know this. It's eleven, right? Oh.
It's on page ninety-one of the documents Steve sent out, um, yesterday, I believe.
Yeah, and it's sourced from the Florida League of Cities.
Right, but this is not in the current eleven point four.
Eleven point four.
Of the current, that's why I'm not, it's not there in the current Charter.
No, it's not in the current Charter. No.
Okay, that was my point. Okay.
Yeah, no, this is.
So. Couple of things, um. I falsely impugn, if you're impugning somebody, it is false, I think, by definition. Uh, I might consider putting in knowingly. If you can get back to that. I, and also should we qualify this by in a, um. Public meeting or a public setting. The reason I. Put that in, if you think of this at the extreme now, this apply, this applies to all town employees. So if a teacher is having a meeting with a parent. Uh, private meet, well, just, just them, and for some reason the parent thinks that the teacher has impugned their character. It now becomes an ethics complaint. I'm not sure that's what we intended, maybe it is, but.
Hmm.
I think we're thinking of times when somebody uses their, in a public setting, starts berating basically. Somebody in the public or I guess through a, um, communication of some sort.
Yeah, I, I don't have an issue with that. Uh, like I was, I debated whether to leave that in there after we moved the conduct section. Out of there, but, um, is again, this is, this is, uh.
I'd say, I, I think it's bad, well, I think it's bad that if, you know, official at a public setting knowingly. Starts going after a, well, going after a name since, but starts impugning the character of somebody. Um, I think that would be also from the ethics point of view, the commission point of view, it would be pretty clear if that's going on, it would be, should be an easy, relatively easy case to do. And my last point is that should, if it's gonna be in that paragraph, it should be the last sentence. Because this provision is not intended to prevent an RTM member, really only applies to the first sentence.
Yes.
Yes.
Good point. All right, so I'll change the word falsely impugned to knowingly impugned and add a clause. In a public setting, um.
That sounds right. Can I just ask whether this is more properly put in the, um, in the civility section as opposed here? I feel like that might be. Well, obviously, the question then is, is this something that there's sort of a cause of action under the. Uh, ethics provisions or it's a. Kind of aspirational, which is what the civility section is.
Yeah, the only penalties in the civility section is you can get thrown out of a meeting.
Yeah.
The chair can throw you out of a meeting, um.
But I think that's a very good question, um, whether you do want to open that up because I fear what. It has the potential to lead to a lot of ethics complaints. There is a little bit of. My making a statement is you're impugning my reputation. And, and, and there's also the, the investigation that is supposed to be made, you know, uh. In confidence by the commission, it just, whether it fits that paradigm, I, I'm not sure that it does. So it's. We just throw that out there. Where would, how was this added? What was the impetus for this? This was a?
We put it, we put it in here when we put the civility provisions in. The civility provisions were, uh, in, in the back of the document. And this one I pulled out because it seemed to be closer to, um, an ethics standard. Um, it could be an ethics standard, but it could be a slippery slope.
Hmm. Um. Oh. So I, I, in the egregious example, let's say we didn't have this clause and there is, we all agree, an egregious example. We've, uh, when I was on the Exeter Commission, people did make complaints under ten point one. Kind of have a little debate whether that was operative or not, which is the Declaration of Policy. Saying that all employees shall demonstrate the highest standard of conduct. But I think in the end, at least the commission I was on, felt that. Some, there is something to that clause and that somebody just by being, like doing something like this. Impugning somebody's character clearly in a public meeting would violate a, um, the highest standards of ethical conduct. I, different commissions may take a different view on that interpretation, but, so I'm saying if we take it out, it's not all without fail, but. To go after the egregious case.
So what's your pleasure? Should we leave it here or move it into the rules of civility provision?
I don't know. I mean, I feel like there's a. There's a good, you know, a good.
This is a good lawyer question.
But it's really.
All these lawyers, no, I mean, no.
Well, lawyers tend to go to the worst case, and I think, uh, Attorney Baldwin brings up a good issue, and I can think of cases where this could be. Um. Weaponized, weaponized, yes.
That's a common term.
So, I mean, one way, and, and again, we had said earlier that we're gonna encourage, maybe not in the document, but at least it, the, the, the RTM or somebody to come up with the code of ethics for the town. And that could deal with some of this issue and maybe give a little bit more thought to how to do it. Um, and at the end of the day, we'd then have the same effect of it being in here. So, um.
So there is, there is no code of ethics in Fairfield, in the ordinances?
There is a very, a very brief code of, uh, conduct, but it, it, it's really very general and broad. And kind of refers you back to the, uh. Yeah, it, not in the sense, in the modern sense of what you'd consider a code of ethics, right?
Right.
Why don't we take a look at this, and, um, I'll send a note out to everybody after I've talked to, uh, I'm going to talk to the Chair, talk to, uh, the town attorney, maybe the lawyers, our colleagues on the Commission, and get some thinking on this as to where we should.
Yeah.
Put this. Um, I left it in, I thought it was an important standard. It probably should have moved with the civility section, uh, because it could be a slippery slope. But then you, the other problem you have is, um, I've never heard of a town that had an ethics provision in the Charter with no ethics ordinance. So, uh, um, that's something you need to think about, so we'll play with that. The last item is, we have the seal language, remember, we, we modified that. You said at the beginning of the meeting, you want to add a ten-year required charter revision. Is that correct?
Somebody said that.
I know that the town attorney's not in favor of it, um, but, um, did I hear that or not hear that? Now, ten years ago, my question would have been, oh, Mendick's looking for work. Uh, but ten years from now, I'll be eighty, so who knows? Um, but it, it's really a question for your, um, you know, your decisions to whether or not you want to have a mandatory, uh, revision every ten years. That's a call, but I thought you had said that earlier in the meeting, that's why I raised it now, because I made a note. This is where it would be.
The most, it, it, is that, is, my inclination is to say no, but what, what's standard practice?
Depends, and the charters I do, they're in. Uh, most of my charters have ten-year requirements, uh, in them. Waterbury, Hartford, uh, New Haven, Newing, uh, Hampden. Um, I put them in there because, um, I think it's good to take a look at your charter. Uh, many of the charter revisions I've dealt with are relatively minor events. Um, they deal with, um, issues that have come up, or incrementally, and you could do this in three years. We've dealt with a lot of issues that we ultimately didn't resolve in this charter. Two years from now, six years from now, you may decide, we want to tackle those issues again. Uh, but I, in Hartford, I'm tackling issues this time in Hartford that we've talked briefly about in the three prior Commissions. Um, and, uh, we're finally hitting them. It's, that's twenty years later. And so that's, that's the evolution, and so, and, and two of the charter revisions, between the first one and this one, we dealt with relatively minor issues. Um, so it really depends on what you want to do, but at least somebody is looking at the document every ten years, that's all. You could make it fifteen years, you could make it, uh, not less than ten, not more than fifteen. You know, um, the, the numbers I've used is ten for the most of mine, so if you don't want it, I'm not pushing it on you, I'm just saying, uh, I thought I heard earlier that's what you wanted to do.
Yeah. I, I think it's a good idea. I certainly would leave it flexible if they want to have one earlier, but I think.
You could, you could do it anytime you want.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
That's just a mandatory review.
I, I think it's a good reminder, and, and again, what are you going to do if they don't do it? They're not going to do it.
Oh, that, that's exactly right.
Well. That's, that's not a good reason to, it, I don't know, uh, if they don't do it, what are you going to do about it? I mean, we're, we're trying to write kind of something that has a firm foundation to it. It's, that's, that's exactly why I could sue, I suppose, as a citizen trying to enforce the charter, but I probably won't.
You would, you would do a mandamus action and compel the town of.
Yeah.
To do it.
Oh.
Now, some charter provisions have, um, charter violations are an ethics violation. You do not have that in your charter, so, uh, you don't have that particular.
Don't start suggesting more kinds of words.
I'm not, I'm just saying. No, I, hey, I'm the guy who's saying.
Ten o'clock, Steve.
Mute.
I say put ten years, put it in, that's my vote.
Okay, that's two.
I, I, I think I, I think I'd rather see something that says, in ten years, the Board of Selectmen shall discuss whether or not to open it. That's your kicker, then remind them to look at it. Rather than forcing the opening in a ten, in ten years. I think we're all tired.
Yeah, it's put in the ten years and we can revisit it.
Okay, well, that's, uh, hey, uh, at the back of the document, maybe Jim and I will talk about this tomorrow.
Talk about this.
I placed the charts that were at the beginning of the document, they'd have to be updated. I didn't know whether you wanted to keep them. We should update them if we're going to keep them as an addendum to the document, but, uh, we can make a final decision, but maybe Jim and I will talk about the mechanics of that, um, uh, tomorrow, but, but, um, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I, I deliberately not deleted them because, um, that, you know, they're here, so they, they're kind of, they are in the internal document, don't get me wrong, but I don't know if these charts are easy to read for members of the public, so, uh.
They're kind of a one. They're kind of nice.
That's it for me, in terms of review. So now, you may want to make a motion to present this document to the public hearing next Thursday.
I will entertain that motion. Marlene, oh, you can't, you're, you're firsting it, I think.
I'm firsting it. I, I, I make a motion that we move this to the public hearing for June second.
Okay, any seconds there, with Chair, Commissioner Iaccona? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Extensions, the motion carries, so. With that in mind, we are going to have our public hearing June second. That's the date that has been set. Um, we have a bit of a quandary with the location, which we have to nail down tomorrow. I, it was an oversight, Marlene did send me, um, an email, and, uh, essentially, I guess, one, one of our challenges is that, um, doing it hybrid, um, we're limited to make it a live, so that's one challenge, which we'll get to. And the other one is that making it a live event, we are limited to doing it either at Sullivan Hall, the Board of Ed, Fairfield Woods Auditorium, or Sacred Heart Community Theater, um.
That, that would be a long shot, so let, let's leave that one out for right now.
All right, you know what, I'll let you kind of recap, because you're a little more familiar with that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, we're, um, so, John, at John Matola, at your meeting, at your Board of Finance meeting, there, there was definitely some issues with the sound and everything, and I know one of your presenters had to move over, um, because you could, because WebEx did not work. So it, uh, the Board of Ed location, unless we can use the actual Board of Ed, uh, technology, um, I'm not sure that that, that worked out that well.
Well, that, that was just, that was just, just, that was a glitch that lasted for about a half hour or so, and it was fixed. So I wouldn't preclude that, using that room because of that. We got it fixed eventually, and it was literally, somebody plugged something in the wrong way. It wasn't, yeah, it wa, it wasn't like something that's going to, my understanding is going to be a chronic issue, so.
Poor Carolyn, she had to, like, run over there and present in person.
Yeah, we had to call her over because we weren't sure, so, but go ahead, I'm listening.
Okay, so possibly Board of Education is a possibility. So let me check with, um, let me check with the people who do the scheduling and see if we can get that room.
Can you ask them if we can actually use their equipment so we don't have to have this hodgepodge thing that they're forcing the town to do?
Yeah, that's Nancy Burns, right?
Yeah.
Oh. Can, can I say, I'm sorry, this is Prue, can I interrupt for one second?
Please, please.
Um, Jerry told me today that they have installed a new sound system over there.
Over at the Board of Ed?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, great. That could be the, the answer. So let me find out.
Well, hopefully that works, but the cam, but the camera system still wasn't that great. And it was my understanding the Board of Ed wasn't letting the town tie into anything, but maybe that, maybe that fixes it, I don't know.
All right, well, let me find out those specifics tomorrow.
Is that equipment capital equipment, because the town owns it then? Fuck.
Exactly.
Yeah, the town paid for it. Yeah, yeah, the town paid for it, you're spot on.
All right.
We're going to get some mandamus actions going before.
There we go, there we go. Um.
Exactly.
Before we break up then, um, you'll work all that out. We need, Mr. Town Attorney, we need to really establish a date for the reception of the document by the, by the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, that was my other question that I sent to Steve today, too.
Yeah, um, and I've been thinking about it as well, Marlene, thank you for, um, triggering me on it, though. Um, because I'm, I'm empty in my dates, um, for the, um, meetings with them, and we want to do a pretty, I think we'd want to do a pretty aggressive schedule to really go through the document with them as quickly as possible. Um, and, and presumably, they're not using their sixty days, because then, then we won't get this on the ballot. It's, you know, it's just the reality, so, um, uh, which we've talked about all along. So we have to really get a, get a meeting as soon as possible. After our final meeting on the sixth, which is Monday, if we could possibly have a special meeting with them that week, that would be wonderful.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll effort that, and I'm sure that they'll be accommodating as best they can. Yeah.
That's still be four o'clock? Attorney Baldwin, would that still be at four o'clock?
I, I, I can't speak for the Board, but, uh, uh, they have been flexible when, uh, special meetings needed to take place, so most likely four o'clock, I think, would be the, uh, the norm. If that's a problem for this body, I don't, I think, Steve, you said that not everybody from the Commission necessarily needs to participate in that.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's nice at the handoff meeting to have everybody there, but basically, you need to have representation of the Commission at the first meeting to make the presentation.
Just so I know, so when they host us for this, do they, do they serve, is it a formal dinner, or is it more of a buffet, or how does that work?
And what kind of champagne do they supply?
I'll look at the statute, uh, and report back to Attorney Baldwin.
In circumstance.
That's in Section thirteen, I think.
Section thirteen.
All right.
Yeah.
The goal would be then Chair Caprilli to do the June second meeting hybrid? Because you sort of had said, either we're going to do it one or the other, but if we can do it hybrid, well.
I mean, I think that that's kind of what we, um.
The June second meeting is hybrid, yeah.
The June second, correct.
Yeah, I, I think that's.
Yeah, we, Steve, we know you're going to be virtual.
If I, look, if you can't do hybrid and I have to be there publicly, I'll be there, but, uh.
I think for the public, I think we have to, at this point, you know, accommodate that, um.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, Hartford got some criticism for not, uh, um, having their public hearing in public, so, uh.
We would like to, I mean, it's something that we've talked about several times, so.
Yeah, no, my question was, can we do it all public, or do we have to have a hybrid option? But it sounds to me like we need a hybrid option.
No, the statute, the statute, um, default is in-person, so you can do that. Um, um, the legislature, um, and I, Brian, you and I, and maybe the town attorney can look at it, but I believe the default under the state statute is public, is, um, is an in-person meeting, and, um.
And it would be recorded, so people could listen to it in the next day.
You'd want to record it, but there may not be mechanisms for recording it, you'd have to figure that out. That's, that's, that's the benefit of having Zoom or something like that, um, at a meeting, but, uh, a lot of towns are not set up for a hybrid at this point, to do it in a cohesive way. The only thing they, they really can do electronically is what we're doing. Um, so, but I believe the, uh, you may check with your colleagues or the, your, your, uh, the folks in the Senate. I believe that the statute default is an in-person meeting.
All right.
We can always go back to the old-fashioned way and just do it and have Fair TV tape it.
That's what I was thinking.
Right.
That's the other way to do it, but, um.
They're going to do it anyway, they're going to tape it.
Right.
Yeah.
They can do, they can broadcast live at the Board of Ed, right?
Yeah, and then we could have what we, then we could have the sound system and on-camera, and then we don't have to deal with all this other stuff.
I'll talk to the town attorney and see if he agrees with me on the reading of the statute, the new statute that's come through.
Okay, so we'll assess that out, and, um, but it looks like, so, Marlene, you'll talk to the Board of Ed. Okay, so right now, we're planning to do it at the Board of Ed on June second. Um, definitely in-person, looking at the hybrid portion of it, and, um, still seven o'clock, and it will be broadcast, I believe, live on Fair TV, if we can make that arrangement, so, um.
That would be the goal.
Good, all right. Uh, anything else before we, um, sign off? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Motion to adjourn.
John Wayne, say it my Pam. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Night, bye-bye.
Bye.